Are we legal? Is everybody ready? Let me call to order and welcome you to the Tuesday, November 13th, meeting of Mount Pleasant Town Council. Here where we said we would be when we said we would be here, and it's good to see all of you here this evening. We will start off with a prayer by Chaplain Doug Farmer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Gary Santos. Please stand.
I invite you to join me in prayer. Eternal and gracious God, we come before you this evening with hearts of gratitude and hearts full of grief. We give gratitude tonight as we see the young Special Olympians here for recognition. And we give gratitude for the fact that not only are we recognizing their accomplishments, but we're giving thanks for the joy that they bring into so many lives each and every day. The examples of kindness and sheer joy that we see on their faces are certainly traits that we should emulate in our lives. And Lord, our hearts are still full of grief. We feel the collective grief across this country for the death of the 11 people who were killed as they worshipped in Pittsburgh. For a black couple who were killed because of their skin color while they shopped in a grocery store. And this week, we give our heartfelt thanks for the firefighters in California who are helping so many people. So many deaths, over 40, and 6,000 homes have been destroyed, so many lives have been affected. Lord, thousands of years ago, your prophet Micah was asked, "What does the Lord require of us?" And he had a simple response: "Love, justice, seek mercy, and walk humbly with him." And your Son Jesus told us that the two greatest commandments were, "Love you with all our heart, soul, and mind," and "to love our neighbors as ourself." Lord, I pray that you will soften hearts that have been hardened by the power consumption of the world and that we will listen once again for your words to bring kindness and love back into our lives. All this we ask, in your most precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item number three is Compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Mr. Pagliarini, are we in compliance?
Yes, Mayor, we're in compliance.
Thank you very much. Item number four is Approval of the Agenda. Mr. Bustos?
I'd like to move that we amend the agenda and move item 11A3, which is the building permit allocation system, up to 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second to move item 11A3, Building Permit Allocation, up to item 7A. That would mean that we would begin discussing that before we get into all the planning items that we have. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to move that item up to 7A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, so we now have an amended agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an approved amended agenda. Item number five, Public Hearings, Awards, and Presentations. First, Mr. Alma will lead us in a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This first public hearing is a request to change our comprehensive plan, future land use plan map, from its current community conservation designation to commercial. This is approximately two acres of land, and it consists of four parcels. And there are associated annexation and rezoning requests. The property is located here on Highway 17 North, between 17 North and Old Georgetown Road, just north of where Long Point Road intersects and tees into Highway 17. And again, our plan calls for community conservation, for future land use. And the property is outside the town limits, and ultimately, the request would be to annex. So with that, I'll turn it over to you to conduct the public hearing, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public here to address this item in the public hearing? Anyone at all? All right, there being no public comments, we will declare this portion of that public hearing closed. Recognition and remembrance of public servants and awards and presentations.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Would you and council members please join me up front? Okay, good evening. Would the family of Mary Julia Royal please join me up front? I'm going to go ahead, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, and read a proclamation issued by Mayor Haney earlier. It states, "Whereas Mary Julia Campbell Royal was born in the upstate of South Carolina on December 30th, 1925; and whereas Ms. Royal received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Erskine College in 1945; and after receiving a fellowship at the University of South Carolina, received a Master of Arts in English Literature, as well as certifications in musical supervision and organ performance; and whereas Ms. Royal served on the staff of the Brevard Music Center and as a music teacher at Montreat College. After her marriage to Jervy Dupree Royal, she continued sharing her love of music by giving recitals, private piano lessons, serving as the director of glee clubs at Multry High School and college preparatory school in several churches. And whereas, Ms. Royal also served as Mount Pleasant's historian for over 20 years, was a founding member of the Town of Mount Pleasant Historical Commission, and was recognized as the inaugural recipient of the Commission's Cresco Historical Stewardship Award. And in honor of her work with the town's history, the Sons of Confederate Veterans named a park after her. And whereas, Mary Julia Campbell Royal published two popular histories of Mount Pleasant: Mount Pleasant, the Victorian Village, and Mount Pleasant, the Friendly Town. Served as President of the Confederate Memorial Association for many years and President of the Christ Church Parish Preservation Society since 1996. And whereas, Mary Julia Campbell Royal remained active until she was called home, always with a project in mind, keeping the history of the Town of Mount Pleasant alive for future generations. Now therefore, I, Will Haney, Mayor of the Town of Mount Pleasant, hereby express the gratitude of the Town of Mount Pleasant for the hard work and dedication of Mary Julia Campbell Royal, for her dedication to the historical preservation of the town she loved." The next item on the agenda is the Veterans Day Proclamation. Council members, ladies and gentlemen, I will read the proclamation that Mayor Haney issued just yesterday in recognition of Veterans Day. Proclamation, "Whereas during National Veterans Month, we salute and pay tribute to the brave and dedicated veterans who have worn the uniform of the United States of America and celebrate their selfless service and sacrifice to make our military the best in the world. And whereas, our veterans, men and women, represent the best of America and have answered the call to defend our country and freedom for generations with courage and pride, to face danger and uncertainty. And whereas, as President Ronald Raiken once said, "America's debt to those who would fight for her defense does not end today the uniform comes off." Our veterans have fulfilled their duty to this country with courage and loyalty, and it is our solemn obligation to demonstrate our continuing gratitude, unwavering support, and encouragement. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we stop to recognize veterans, military families, and those who gave their lives and service to this great nation. And we are indebted to these heroes for the freedoms we enjoy today. Now therefore, I, Will Haney, Mayor of the Town of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as National Veterans Month in the Town of Mount Pleasant and ask all Mount Pleasant residents to join him in offering sincere thanks and gratitude to our veterans."
First of all, I'd like to recognize Major General Livingston, who is our local level five recipient. I ask all veterans who are here tonight, please stand.
The next item is the recognition of the South Carolina American Planning Association 2018 Outstanding Planning Projects. And Mayor and council members, it is my pleasure to recognize our Planning Department for receiving the award given to them by the South Carolina American Planning Association, also known as SCAPA. Every two years, SCAPA delivers these awards, which go a long way to improving the quality of life for South Carolinians. And this year, we were recognized for the Shem Creek Project, which is now on to its third phase. And you know the project very well. You've been committed to it and have supported it from the very beginning. Couldn't have happened, certainly, without your commitment and support. And what was unique about this award was that the town was recognized for everything that the project means to the community. The public-private partnerships that were created, the recreational opportunities it provides to residents, giving them access to the waterfront, and the foot traffic that it brings to local businesses along the creek. And not to leave out, of course, by creating these projects, the preservation that has occurred to this iconic landmark in town. In addition to your support, it's important when receiving the award that we recognize those partners that have helped to make this project successful. First, our design team in Thomason Hutton, our contractors, Salmon's Dredging and Cape Romaine, and our two private owners and Mount Pleasant residents, Ryle Fitch and Bubba Simmons, who, without their support, the second phase of this project just could not have happened. And last but not least, I know he's here, I believe, Kevin Mitchell. Kevin, if you'll stand up. Kevin Mitchell, sir. As you know, Kevin's our town engineer and served as the project manager in every phase of this project and stayed in control and just did a superb, superb job. So, without further ado, I'd like Jeff to come up, as well as all members of the Mount Pleasant Planning Department. Christiane, as well, please come forward. And Jeff, when you're ready, if you present the award to the mayor, that would be great.
Drum roll. We got a drum roll, please? Mayor, on behalf of the Planning Department, we'd like to present this to you and the Town Council and our entire community. And I think what's special about this is, we do a lot of plans, and we get recognized a lot for policy, long-term vision, and that's what you hear us do a lot. This award relates to making something happen on the ground and implementing a plan. And so, we're proud, especially proud, because we show we can do both sides of the planning process. We can plan, and we can build things to improve our community in Mount Pleasant. So on behalf of us, this is for you all.
And on behalf of all the council, thank you.
Mr. Owens, would you lead us, sir, in the recognition of the Multry Middle Student Government, please? Thank you.
Council and citizens of Mount Pleasant, representatives from the Multry Middle School Student Government, are here to be recognized for their efforts to support the restoration of Crab Bank Sea Bird Sanctuary, one of only five sea bird nesting islands in our state, and located right here, just outside Shem Creek. These Multry Middle School students were able to raise funds through their leadership on a school-wide initiative. And they raised a total of $675.25, and they donated to the Coastal Bird Conservation Program of the Crab Bank Project. I'd like to invite and introduce Ms. Kylie Newkirk, teacher of these wonderful children, and also Caroline Bradner with the Coastal Conservation League to come up and say a few words.
My name is Caroline Bradner. I work for the Coastal Conservation League. And you've heard me and many others speak about Crab Bank a lot. But Crab Bank is not just a place for birds, it's a place for learning and for connection. And for many years, up until this year, thousands of students have gone out to Crab Bank to see a bird rookery, to connect with the nature, and to learn about ecosystems and wildlife and how everything fits together. And Multry Middle School has been there every year, many, many times. I've personally taken many of them out to see Crab Bank. And teachers like Ms. Kylie Newkirk here are doing great work educating these students about what they can do in their community to really make a difference. And because of that, I want to introduce Kylie and have her come up and say a little bit about what her students did.
Good evening. Again, my name is Kylie Newkirk, and I'm a sixth grade English teacher at Multry Middle School. Thank you for recognizing our student government tonight. As teachers, we try daily to teach and instill a sense of compassion and civic duty, not only in the classroom, but in the rural world as well. And we hope that our students continue to carry this mindset and lead within the community. One way of doing this was providing back to the community, especially Mount Pleasant, and all the things that the town has done for our school. And in student government, we do different fundraisers. And as a school that wears uniforms, the kids really enjoy not having to wear uniforms every now and then. And so, they paid a dollar to have a dress-down day. And this dress-down day back in September went to help save Crab Bank. And like Caroline said, we have been a part of Coastal Expeditions' grant of going on kayaking trips for about 10 years now. We go out to Shem Creek, and then we also go along the Black River. And it's been a wonderful experience for our students to learn about the history of South Carolina and the environment. And when this opportunity came up this summer, as a sponsor for student government, I just knew instantly. I read, there was a big article in the newspaper, and I said, "This is something that we have to do." So we're very proud of our students, and we're very proud of our connection to Coastal Expeditions. And we hope that just our little small parts, excuse me, will help save the nesting sanctuary that's there and part of what we see when we are on our boats coming into Shem Creek. I'd like to introduce two students, Isabella Flynn and Annie Andrews. And they just would like to say a couple of things, too, about what they've learned with this experience. Ms. Bella?
I think it is important for kids to see wildlife up close, like I did, so they realize how important it is to protect the fragile sea life that is part of this area. If we don't protect Crab Bank, we will lose this gem and lose the opportunity to teach kids about the saltwater environment and the historical elements. I would have never known about this beautiful place if I had not gone on that field trip with Coastal Expeditions. Learning about it as a student has helped me be involved in protecting Crab Bank later in life. Hopefully, we take care of Crab Bank so future generations can enjoy it.
Crab Bank isn't important for the thousands of birds who use it for a nesting site and sanctuary. It is also important for the thousands of residents, tourists, and school groups that visit Shem Creek every year. For 10 years, students at Multry Middle School have learned about conservation and preservation during annual kayaking trips to Crab Bank. This year, Multry students donated $675 to help save Crab Bank during the student government dress-down day. Crab Bank gives all of us the chance to learn firsthand about important part of our ecosystem. We now have the chance to save Crab Bank for future generations of birds, residents, visitors, and Multry students. Please do everything you can to make sure Crab Bank is restored and preserved for future generations. Thank you.
The Wando High School boys and girls swim teams were not able to be with us this evening. We will have them back at another time. However, Mr. Santos will lead us in the recognition of Justin Pellock. Sir?
This is one of my favorite things to do on Town Council, is recognizing our youth, whether it's athletics or academics, so we get to carry on the tradition here tonight. Justin Pellock's a senior at Wando High School and is the son of Dr. Chris and Christine Pellock. It is our pleasure to recognize Justin for his achievements tonight. He's been very active in Mount Pleasant community on and off the field. He's an outstanding young man and a role model for the youth in our community. I personally have had the privilege of training and mentoring Justin. On the field, he played recreation soccer until he was eight, and he began playing rec league football under Sean McCarthy. That first year, he played defensive end and running back, and they won the championship. For the next several years, Justin played running back and linebacker, excelling at both positions. At age nine, he advanced for the NFL punt pass and kick to the finals at Carolina Panther Stadium and came in third. In eighth grade, Justin played and started for BE JV football team and was even captain while he was in eighth grade. Ultimately, he chose to go to high school at Wando. In high school, he was a three-year starter at linebacker, setting school records for weightlifting and tackles. He finished his career with over 300 career varsity tackles and four touchdowns. He's been ranked by 247 Sports as a two-star athlete. Stanford, Northwestern, Citadel, Notre Dame, Vanderbilt, UNC, Rice, and Florida are recruiting him. He's had an offer from the Citadel as well. Outside of football, Justin started running track at an early age. I've had the privilege of training him. His work ethic and form were tremendous. He ultimately won the state for the 100-meter and 200-meter dash through the Hershey Track Meet. He was chosen to represent all of the southern states at Hershey, PA. He finished seventh nationally in the 100-meter dash. Seventh nationally. That's amazing. Off the field, he's done extremely well in the classroom. He has a 1490 SAT, and his GPA is over five. He is ranked 15th in the class of 950 students. Justin will have likely one year of college credits based on success in taking AP courses. He was nominated for the prestigious Moorhead Cane Award for a full ride to UNC. He is actively engaged in that process. He gets back to the community, he volunteers at his church, and helps elderly neighbors board up their homes and does yard work and landscaping for them. Justin is a true student athlete and a role model for our youth in Mount Pleasant. The Mount Pleasant community made it possible for him to succeed, and Justin has voiced his appreciation to the town for his opportunities here to succeed. Thank you very much, Justin. Congratulations. Just to tell you a little something, you know, Justin, when he was like 13-years-old, I was training him. You probably saw the videos. He would come to training, and he'd tell me, you know, what kind of foods he was eating, how many calories he was taking in, and he was telling me how many calories he was burning up per exercise we were doing. And, you know, I'm looking at him going like, you know, "Man, you're 12, 13-years-old." You know, but he was a student of it. He studied it, he conditioned hard, he had a great diet, and he really had his sights set for something like that for a young child. I coached for over three decades, and I have to say that he was the only student that really, really, you know, learned the game through and through, and really took care of himself health-wise as well. Not only athletically, but academically, as you just heard, so congratulations. He's out there taking my place. Justin, on behalf of the mayor and our Town Council, they got a little bag of swag, they called it, for you to take home with you. We now have an opportunity to recognize our Mount Pleasant Unified Athletes for Participation in the 2018 Special Olympic Fall Games on October 27th at the Coastal Carolina University. Our kids did really well. In golf, they were coached by Coach Clifford Lewis. The Golf Skills Competition, Melissa Johnson, fourth place ribbon. Heidi Gray, silver. Josh Clark, gold. Sophia Ross, silver. Austin Corcoran, gold. In the nine-hole alternate shot competition, Chris Conant and Ashley Pridemore, gold. Stevie Bitros and Greg Serminski, sorry, silver. Bo McCormick and Walker Felton, silver. Ashley Knight and Nick Seva, silver. Nikki DeWitt and Chuck Pentegras, gold. Dorchester Dragon Soccer, silver, included three Mount Pleasant Recreation Department athletes, Grant Baker, Anita Stonecypher, and Ryan Carlat. At this time, I'd like to ask them all to come up, please. Come on in, shake a hand with the mayor and council. Good job, everybody.
Mayor and council, I would like to ask Mr. Mike Talby, our Chief Building Inspector, to join me here at the podium. Mayor and council, I would like to ask Mr. Mike Talby, our chief building inspector, to join me here at the podium. And at the risk of getting in trouble, he needs to go to UNC. They need some football players right now. Mike started as a building inspector with us in nineteen ninety-eight and quickly established himself as a dedicated employee. His level of experience and knowledge of the industry, project management, construction methods and materials is only possessed by the most experienced and well-trained professionals. Mike is highly certified in all disciplines of construction inspection, including building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, zoning, and property maintenance. Mike's service to the community as a building inspector and his current capacity as the chief building inspector goes way beyond just getting the job done. He's been instrumental in helping many town business owners navigate our construction and approval processes. Many times, he's worked with owners, contractors, and design professionals, putting extra time when needed to make sure they can complete a project and get the owner open for business. He's also worked alongside many other employees from different departments in town on construction projects of our own. From small buildings such as the farmer's market bathrooms to large-scale projects such as this building and the new gym next door, Mike has used his expertise in construction to help guide the completion of many public facilities. In his current position, he supervises five inspectors, and in addition to doing all of his own inspections, he coordinates and monitors their daily activity. Mike is very well-known in the field, and we receive many compliments on his level of public service and willingness to push for success. He's always willing to lend a hand and a laugh when asked to track down an issue. Mike is an excellent public servant who serves this community in a capacity that directly affects health, life safety, and security of the citizens of Mount Pleasant. We are all thankful and proud that he is part of our team. Congratulations. Twenty years, twenty years.
If you want me to picture. Not you?
If you were to shave, they might ask you to put that.
Nice to meet you, mom.
If I were you?
How are you?
You good?
Not like your dad, what do you mean by that?
If you aren't here for the rest of the meeting, now is your time to go. Let's see. This brings us to six, I do believe. All right, this brings us to item six, approval of minutes from the October ninth, twenty eighteen Town Council meeting and the October twenty eighteen financial statement. Do we have a motion? For approval of the minutes and the financial statements?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. I assume that's for both.
Both.
For both. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I did notice that the minutes were kind of sanitized a little bit on the topic of Mr. Daniels trying to respeak at the end after the finances of his organization were challenged. I worked with the clerk to try and figure out why that was. We weren't able to pin that down, why it disappeared, but I did check with a few council members who remember him requesting to speak and being told no. So I'll be voting no, but it's kind of immaterial. I just think that the minutes seem to miss certain key points, and it's a little bit alarming.
You can always make a motion to amend the minutes, councilman.
Right, but after tonight, that's not an option, so.
Well, I mean, you can make it now if you'd like.
Yeah, it was a five-hour meeting, and it was the point of somebody being challenged, then being refused to answer that challenge. It didn't change the course of the meeting, so it doesn't have to result in change in minutes. I just want on the record that that was omitted for some reason.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of the Town Council meeting from October ninth and the financial statements from October, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, no.
The motion passes eight to one. The minutes are approved. Yes. Correspondents and public statements?
Yes, sir.
Did we move that to eight or to seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still at correspondence. Okay, correspondence and public statements. Anyone who has signed up, Mr. Demora has your name on there. If you came to speak to permit allocation, please keep in mind that it will be the next item on the agenda.
Barry Wolf. Catherine Mayne.
Catherine Mayne, thirteen twenty-one, Cassidy Court. I'm with the East Cooper Land Trust, and I just am here to say thank you all for putting it on the agenda to look at options for the Wando Dock project and for permanent protection. The East Cooper Land Trust is very interested in partnering with the town of Mount Pleasant to permanently protect this piece of land. We think it's critical for the seafood industry in order to survive in Shem Creek. We are prepared to put in two grants totaling two million dollars, but we do need Town Council to approve our submitting these grants. And so I hope that you will consider approving our submittal of these so that we can continue this process moving forward and hopefully permanently protect the Wando Dock property. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Kalinsky.
You have two minutes, and is the light system working tonight? Okay, you'll get a green light, a yellow light, and then a red light.
So, not Amanda Kalinsky, but Bradley Kalinsky, sixteen oh one, Louden Drive. That is in Mount Pleasant. This is in reference to old business, I think fifteen, which is the rezoning of a plot of land on Natahala Boulevard from commercial to residential. As the owner of the property right across the street, just wanted to state that we would be in support of this. Feel that a denial of this and keeping it commercial would generally affect us negatively in the overall tranquility of the neighborhood as well as traffic influx and efflux. Thank you.
Thomas Donaldson.
Thomas Donaldson, sixteen forty-nine, Louden Drive. I would like to echo the comments of the previous speaker. Also, as a resident of Louden Drive, I support the rezoning of that property and think that residential is the best use for that piece of land. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I would like to express my opposition to any broad-reaching regulations that limit the ability of property owners in the town of Mount Pleasant to utilize their property for short-term rentals. I understand that this is a complicated issue, and please know that property owners are willing to abide by and even support fair and reasonable regulations. That said, automatically ruling out entire communities from participation in short-term rentals just because they're zoned residential townhouse district or multifamily district is unreasonable, and I believe there's no basis for such actions. We live in a big town, and every community is different in their character and values. For example, when my wife and I bought our house on Louden Drive, there was a full-size school bus parked in the front yard of our neighbor's house, which he converted to an RV to take to NASCAR races. And the character of our neighborhood was to not have a problem with that. So I would recommend allowing individual communities to take it up with their HOA and their neighbors if they are opposed to short-term rentals. So again, I ask you not to arbitrarily prohibit short-term rentals on entire communities just because they're zoned residential townhouse district or multifamily district. As I've said, property owners are willing to abide by fair and reasonable regulations, and there is no reason to impose broad-sweeping restrictions on the entire town because of a small number of disgruntled citizens in a few select communities. Thank you for your time.
John Wright.
Honorable mayor and distinguished council members, thank you for this few minutes of speak. I live at one forty-five Rose Lane. I want to first thank you, mayor, for the recognition for the veterans for the month of November. That's huge. I think that we're certainly off to the right start. And I just want to make sure we add some substance to your proclamation and get more activities here east of the Cooper for veterans. I think it's critical. I don't want to celebrate Veterans Day in North Charleston. I want to do it in Mount Pleasant. And then in addition to that, I'd like to ask you all to give serious consideration to the Wando Dock. I think it's a very important part of Mount Pleasant. It's a staple. The seafood industry, we know how long they've been around. I came back home after twenty-nine years to eat shrimp, and I don't want to have to get them from anywhere else. So if you would, please, please give consideration to work in with the East Cooper Land Trust and Catherine Mayne and getting that Wando Dock saved. Thank you for your time, and I know that good results have come from this, and I look forward to them as well as the rest of us here in Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all I had under that item, sir.
All right, was there anyone else who did not have the opportunity to sign up who wishes to speak? All right, this moves us...
Yes, sir. I'd like to address one thing very quickly, is that our former mayor, Sherwood Flowers, her husband Harold had a massive heart attack. And I just want to keep her and her family in our thoughts and prayers. Wanted to share that with council, and hopefully he'll make a full and decisive recovery. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. When was that, by the way? Obviously, okay, thank you. All right, so this would bring us to seven A, which is the building permit allocation system. This would be first reading of an ordinance, which, if you're following on your bingo cards, it's number one eight zero nine seven. And I guess I will turn it over to Mr. Alma. And then since this came from the planning committee, even though we're not in that section of the agenda, after that, we'll defer to the chairman of the planning committee.
Okay, thank you, mayor. By way of background, the planning committee, as you mentioned, has been focused on this topic, and they've looked at development trends and various growth management items at several meetings throughout this year. In August, the committee presented a proposal that, and requested that the full council authorized staff to begin preparing a draft ordinance, and we've done that. We have utilized as a base the ordinance that the community was familiar with and used back in two thousand through two thousand and seven. And so we built it on that, but we believe we've simplified it, and from an administrative standpoint, have made it something more manageable for the behind-the-scenes activities that we have to do. And the planning committee reviewed the draft ordinance at their meetings in September and earlier, beginning of last week, and recommended that this be presented to you this evening. The main features of the program, in a summary, is that we built it on a five-year approach to be able to handle the numbers and the information. We use annual allocations, but distribute those twice a year, semi-annually. So whatever the number of available permits slash allocations would be, we would have a January one group half, and we would issue permits, and then a July one, starting again. The entire system is designed to be first come, first served. So if on May fifteenth, somebody applies and there are available permits from that first half-year allocation, those would be available. And if it's June twentieth, and they're near the end, and we've issued already the maximum number for that six-month period, that would just roll over into the next allotment for the next half of the year. One of the other things that we built in here, as part of any system, we think it's important that you all, with staff, monitor and evaluate the system and make sure that it's operating and working in the way that you're expecting and the community would be expecting, and then there's that ability to adjust as necessary. The ordinance as drafted uses a fixed number of permits rather than a percentage growth rate, but it's translatable into percentages, as you see here on our chart on the right. And the way it's designed, it would exclude those residential developments covered by a legal development agreement already, which would be Liberty Hill Farms and Carolina Park. And by way of reference, those two developments would be estimated based on the Carolina Park average and the takedown schedule in the development agreement for Liberty Hill Farms. Those would generate approximately two hundred and twenty residential permits per year. So the remainder, and the system is designed to allocate six hundred additional residential units for the rest of the community. Based on our estimation that we would have about forty thousand dwelling units by the end of the year, that entirety translates to two-point-one percent over the duration of the program. And by comparison, the past five years were a three-point-five-four percent average growth rate in building permit issuance. There are two tables and only a couple of categories that we created on the, sort of the single-family side, if you will. Single-family detached units, single-family attached, meaning townhomes and duplexes, and ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So utilizing the numbers there, we would end up dealing with single-family at five hundred per year. But moving to table two, we would then add one hundred per year multifamily, and over the five-year period, that would be equivalent to five hundred total multifamily units. So that's how the division of the allocation is laid out in the ordinance in front of you this evening. There are a couple of exemptions, recognizing that somebody who removes a structure and wants to replace it with another structure isn't having a negative impact generating additional impacts on the community. So that would not be part of, those would be over and above the whatever allocation is set. And we built in, as requested by the planning committee, a low-income affordable housing project exemption, and that would be for low-income residential development projects where the occupants would earn eighty percent or less of the area median income within our region. If our annual allotment is not reached, the permits would be rolled over into subsequent either half-year or entire year. So if there are six hundred that we're working with in a given year, we issue five fifty, those extra fifty would move over to the following year. And if we, as I mentioned earlier, if we have valid applications for permits that exceed the number of allotments that we have, those would just be put in the queue and held, working with the applicant to process that particular building permit at the next available opportunity that we have, when there are available units that could be permitted. All permit applications must be complete. Construction, as we do require now, must begin within six months. Otherwise, that particular approval would go back into the pool. And there may be minor revisions to a building plan. And there may be minor revisions to a building plan that somebody would be able to do, but turning in a permit for a single-family home and then coming back later and completely changing it would not be allowed. And we have some mechanisms that we would use to be able to monitor that. So the ordinance is in front of you this evening for first reading. As part of the zoning code, your planning commission needs to review and make a recommendation to you on it and conduct a public hearing. We would be able to do that at their regular, next regular meeting on December 19, because they meet tomorrow night, and we wouldn't be able to turn things around that quickly. And according to our schedule, if council is so inclined, you could have on committee day in January, a special council meeting where you might consider final reading of the ordinance. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, and we're available for questions as you proceed.
Thank you. I'll defer to the chairman of the committee. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Haney. This is something that we've been working on for a number of months. We had other staff sections come in to the planning committee and advise us on things that may impact their staff section. We brought it to the council several months ago and asked if this was something akin or close to what was wanted, and then there was a unanimous vote to go ahead and prepare the final ordinance, which is what we have. This is something, as you can tell from the level of detail, that has been a real work in progress. And my compliments to Mr. Alma and the Planning Division. There was a lot of work put into this. I think it not only covers residences as single-family homes, but also ADUs, which we had wrestled with as to how we would manage ADUs. This does that. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure to make the motion to approve the permit allocation program.
We have a motion. In fact, it's from the committee, I believe.
Yeah. It was unanimous.
Okay. So it doesn't require a second, but we normally do that. Is there a second?
Second.
From members of the committee. We have a motion. We have a second. Let me see if I can get this right. Mr. Paglioni, I guess what we are actually doing is passing first reading of the ordinance as written and distributed. That is the details, and this is the ordinance itself.
That is correct, sir. The actual ordinance is an attachment. The language of the permit allocation system is an attachment to the ordinance.
Okay.
And that is what would be enacted after a public hearing at planning commission, recommendation by planning commission, and then second reading by council, which would include, if applicable, any amendments.
Okay. So to be correct, this is a motion to pass ordinance 18097 as distributed.
Yes, sir.
Is everybody clear on that? All right. Discussion. Mrs. Lanning.
I don't even know if I had my hand raised yet, Mayor. Thank you. You just knew that look in my eye. I'll just make one comment in regard to the fact that ordinarily, things like this, which is a top-down approach to solving a problem, doesn't fit very well when you're a very free-market-oriented person. Normally, in a free market, businesses and citizens and everything regulate themselves by the fact that, you know, if it starts to get too crowded, it's not as attractive, et cetera, et cetera. But unfortunately, it hasn't worked very well. Everybody loves Mount Pleasant and wants to come here. And so what we heard loud and clear a year ago in the campaign was something has to be done to slow things down. And so the permit allocation program, in this case, I asked a lot of questions behind the scenes to understand that really the numbers are still very generous in the sense that if somebody wants to live here, they'll be able to live here, but it hopefully gives a little bit of a slowdown such that we can let infrastructure and businesses and services catch up, which is what we really, really need for Mount Pleasant. So again, goes a little against my free-market side of the thing, but I think it's what we need at this time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Lanning. Yes, Mr. Santos.
Yes, Mayor. As many of you probably remember, back in 2013, I brought this issue up, and unfortunately, the council at the time didn't have the appetite to at least investigate this and look into it. So I'm glad it's being brought up again. I think it's a very powerful tool that can help us manage our growth. I'd just like to maybe have it sent also to the police judicial legal committee as well, just to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and all the legal aspects of it. As you know, we had a lawsuit last time on it. We were successful, and I just want to make sure we're following the same pattern as we followed last time so that everything is done, you know, the way it was done last time. So we'll be successful in the event we're challenged on it.
Well, the motion on the floor is to approve first reading of the ordinance. So that would have to be... Mr. Paglioni, I guess we'll just see how the vote to approve goes on first reading.
Yes, or it can be not be part of the vote if there's an agreement to put it on PLJ, or you can deal with it after.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
The motion we have before us is to approve first reading.
Right.
I'm sorry. I'm not trying to cut you off.
No, what I'm trying to say is I'm okay with the first reading, just as long as between the first and second reading, we let it go to the police judicial legal committee just to have it looked at, but I'm not trying to hold it up.
Got it.
I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Okay. Got it. Any others? Yes, sir. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in August, I had asked about the impact fees and asking that they be factored into the financial equation of permit allocation plan. And I haven't heard anything as of yet, so I don't know that it's gone to the finance committee. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Santos regarding the police legal and judicial. But it's something that because our impact fees just escalated to 80%, which is the highest, that that be taken into consideration. It would appear that the trends have moved downward, and maybe, Mr. Alma, you can express, we're asking for, as part of this plan, how many permits per year?
600 new and roughly 220 that are already spoken for, so a grand total of 820 per year.
And how many have we had this year?
Something on the order of...
Over a thousand.
Seven?
Over a thousand.
Through... About a thousand?
October. Over a thousand.
Yeah, just a little over a thousand.
Right. Is it correct that in 2016, the growth rate was at 388, and we've had a downward trend since that point? In 2017, it was 326. In 2018, it was 2.93. Would that be accurate?
Yes. And 2018 is only through part of the year.
Correct, yes, not concluded.
So it trends into an annual rate.
Right. Just going forward, and I'm okay with going through the first reading, but I would just ask and ask the planning committee chair to investigate how the impact fees can be factored into the financial equation of the permit allocation, because, as you know, they went up 80%.
That was one of the discussions in the planning committee. I think Ms. Kotov came in that time, and we talked about, you know, impact fees, getting fewer impact fees, getting more impact fees, where traffic is now, where the infrastructure is now. You know, if you don't build the house, you don't create the need for more infrastructure at some percentage. So the impact fee is going to be the impact fee. Plus, impact fees were never designed to slow growth. Impact fees were designed for every house or building or business or whatever to pay for their impact on the town's infrastructure. Houses create more recreational needs, traffic, and businesses likewise. The, at the time, as I'm sure you remember, the taxpayer was paying for 45% of the impact fees required for houses or businesses, and the builder or the developer only paid 55%. And that might be reversed, 45, 55. But the thing is, now it's 80, and even though it is 80 for every impact fee that's paid, the taxpayer of Mount Pleasant still pays 20% of the impact for every new house and every new business in Mount Pleasant. They don't, the builder or the developer does not pay 100%. He only pays 80%, and the taxpayers out here pay 20% toward their impact.
As it trends, as it trends down, do we have any forecast on what 2019 or 2020 might look like under the current scenario?
Under our existing activity or under a proposal?
No, under our current activity.
We haven't done a projection of how that would shake out, but that's information we could do.
Okay. And particularly with how the impact fees would address that scenario as well. Though they weren't designed to slow growth, I think they've had an impact on growth. So if we could include that in our calculations, that'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
We have some citizens who signed up to speak to this while we're in discussion. Go ahead. If you're here to speak on building permit application, would you please come forward, give your name, address? Two minutes. Watch the Christmas lights, please.
Thank you. I thought this opportunity was lost on me.
No.
Berry Wolf, 1468 Pocahontas Street. Thank you, Mayor Haney and members of council. I'm here to urge you to pass this with a pending ordinance doctrine. If you refer to the recently approved residential and mixed-use thing that's available on the thing, there are 8,300 housing units approved. To be clear, that's 20,000 people using the numbers, 84,000 car trips a day. So 25% of it's already done. That's 5,000 souls and 21,000 car trips we're already realizing. We've grown over the past year, five years, at a rate of 3.5%. This plan has the intent to slow it to 2.1. Excludes the 2,500 homes. Gives the town a chance to catch up. Infrastructure and services. We've been talking about regulating our growth for years. Many of you sitting here tonight are sitting there because you supported reining in growth. Now's the time. First reading gives the opportunity to have the ordinance perfected, tweaks if deemed necessary. It's time not to crawl. It is time to walk. This can has been kicked down the road so far. You can bring it to me at the scrapyard. It's already flat. I don't have to do anything with it. Let's get it done. Let's work together, and let's help save our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Only one? Yes, sir. All right. Further council discussion. Mr. O'Rourke.
Just two comments, if I can. I also want to thank the staff for what they did to put this together. This was months, many months, much research, many times we sent them back. So I wanted to say thank you also. But one other thing, for you, Mayor, I guess, is we're going to have a retreat soon, and we often talk about letting the infrastructure catch up, but I don't know if we've ever sat down and articulated what exactly the infrastructure catch-up needs to be, what the timeline's going to be, and what it's going to cost. Because right now, they sound like great buzzwords that we all say, "Let's let the infrastructure catch up." But I think it's our responsibility to catch it up. So we're going to need it to retreat, I believe, because this may be the most important thing that the citizens want, to define what that means and then how to fund that. So that's just another comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. O'Rourke said. I noticed there's a notation that growth has increased traffic congestion and noise, also burdened services, and have required the town to increase its workforce and purchase the necessary machinery and equipment in an effort to maintain acceptable levels of service. That's a new one, for the town to actually acknowledge that one in writing, at least from the time I've been watching. So I applaud that part of it. The other part of it is relates kind of to what Mr. Owens said. We looked at the old ordinance, and we're trying to see what the effect is legally. I'm concerned about the interaction with the impact fees. Will some of this, some of these whereas clauses make it sound like the whole town is in failing infrastructure, which might well be the case. The problem is that runs counter to what we did with the impact fees, because when things are failures already, we can't use that money to fix the failure. We can't use impact fee money. It has to be used for new things. So I'm a little bit concerned about that, and I would like legal to look at that in the meantime. I support first reading. I support the pending ordinance doctrine to start it immediately, but I do want to hear legals' take on that interaction. And I don't think the legal committee's going to do it. It has to be an actual attorney. Take a look at that, please.
Thank you. It would be a separate motion. Okay. All right. I was just getting legal advice that if there were to be a pending ordinance doctrine, it would be a separate motion. But seeing how this will start in January, I'm not sure. You know, you can tell us from how many permits, I mean, in a month, you know, is there likely to be a run on permits in basically one month's time with two holidays?
We wouldn't think so at this time of year, Mayor. Also, we look at and track sort of the supply of platted available lots that are actually eligible for somebody to get a building permit. There may be lots of approvals. There may be zoning entitlements on, you know, out there that could materialize, but those are often estimated sort of with gross numbers. The amount of, you know, available supply of, you know, ready-to-go lots that are platted and recorded where you could get a building permit is not as large as it used to be. Right now, if we're averaging, you know, 52, 54, single-family a month, in another month, it probably would be something like that. We do see spikes, you know, now and then, and it varies as to the cause of what those are. So some months, we've been low for a while, and then maybe due to weather, due to the timing of a project that's been in the works for a long time, and they finally get an entire phase platted with 55 lots and they're ready to go. So you see some of that, but we seem to be hanging pretty steady in terms of the activity.
Okay. Mr. Alma?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jeff, do you recall whether or not there was a run on permits during April to July before the impact fees saw its escalated rise?
We did have some, like in, before the ordinance would escalate. So we had a July 1 and a January 1. Those months or two just before that, there were increases in those. But then afterwards, they dropped back down and were reduced.
Okay.
So they folks monitor and anticipate these things, but whether or not that's sustainable, we don't believe so, again, because of what's available to actually develop.
I'm just asking from a technical standpoint, how would you do a pending ordinance doctrine on an ordinance that is specifically set to begin in January? That's my question. It's a 2019 ordinance.
Right. Legally, it's not going to apply until January 1 anyway. It's not going to affect any permits. Whether there are permits requested ahead of time, there's nothing in a pending ordinance that would prevent that unless council decided to hold off on all permits until that time.
Right. And as I remember from the committee meetings, part of the structure of this is that it works on a calendar year. If you were at the meetings, you heard staff talk about the difficulty of administering this quarterly as opposed to biannually. And so if we did a pending ordinance, then we're going to have six weeks of a year that was not meant to be in there. I mean, I'm all for pending ordinances, but this one is a little different because it's a timing thing for a year, and I see some difficulty in that. But the motion before us is to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's also an economic issue in play. Mortgage rates and borrowing, interest rates are going up. So we don't really know what effect that has. Generally, the people want to borrow while money's cheaper, so they're going to want it... it sooner rather than later. So I think that's something that's in play. I'm not an economist, I can't say exactly what effect it will have, but that's in play that may not have been in play the last time.
All right. Any other discussion before we take the vote? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number 18097, an ordinance to implement a building permit allocation system, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 18097, an ordinance to implement a building permit allocation system, chapter 156 of the Town of Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances.
And remind the public and everyone else, second reading will be at our December meeting.
It's sort of like, special meeting in January, it's January 2.
Okay, got it. All right, so in our amend, hang on a second, I just picked up the wrong agenda. There we go. This moves us to planning, item eight, which would begin with A1, new business, and again, Mr. Ulmer.
Mr. Mayor, items one, two, and three are all annexations. I'd like to make a motion for approval of items A1, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items A1, A2, and A3, all being annexations. And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone here to address these before we vote? All in favor of the motion to approve items A1, two, and three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 18089, an ordinance providing for the annexation approximately 2.05 acre tract of land comprised of four parcels as described as follows. Aye, an approximately 0.47 acre tract of land located on Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140003, and depicted as lot 26 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Aye, aye, and approximately 0.59 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140004, and depicted as lot 25 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Aye, 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 and approximately 0.69 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140005, and depicted as lot 24 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Roman numeral four, an approximately 0.30 acre tract of land located on 2324 Old Georgetown Road, identified by TMS number 580140007, and depicted as lot 23 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book DE, page 389.
Thank you very much. Next item would be number four.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the first reading of ordinances for the zoning of the property that you heard earlier at a public hearing for a comprehensive plan amendment. So the request is to rezone this property to office professional, and the comprehensive plan amendment is to change it to a commercial designation. So I'll present these simultaneously, if you will, and then you can separate out your actions. So here's the location again, between Old Georgetown Road and Highway 17, and the property located here. And so what we have is an annexation proposal and zoning for these four parcels, and the plan amendment. Because they're in unincorporated Charleston County, there are special designations under county zoning. They would also be underneath the sweetgrass basket overlay for the town, but this request does not include bringing that overlay with it. If it did, the overlay itself recognizes this area differently in this Old Georgetown Road loop, and it designates it for low-intensity office kinds of uses, which does not allow for the proposal here, the request here. And it also limits, as point three says, commercial buildings in that designation under our overlay could only be 3,000 square feet of floor area, and they would be limited in terms of hours of operation. So what the request involves is a proposal to locate a bank on this property, and it is a permitted use in OP zoning, and that's what the request is for this property. Many of the properties around here are mostly residential and some scattered, commercial uses and activities nearby. They're adjacent to the fortification line historical resource, and one of the comments we made is that we might want to have some information if, as future site plan submittals would come in to take a look at that. And any commercial development on these parcels would be subject to design review by our design review board. Here is a sketch of the building, you're not approving at this point, the building, this is what the applicants had provided to be able to give a feel for what it was they were proposing. And they also had this conceptual plan showing the layout with right-in, right-out access off 17 and access primarily, full access off Old Georgetown Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve first reading.
Second.
We have a motion to approve.
Excuse me, who was the second on that? Thank you.
Who was the second? Oh, Mr. Owens, Mr. Owens was. We have several people signed up to speak to this, so before we have discussion, let's hear from the public. Yep. George Freeman.
Good evening, George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road, Director of Community Activities for CAGE. I'm not here to speak against this project, in fact, the community's in favor of the project. I'm mainly here to speak about the Johnny Brown Road, the extension that comes off of Old Georgetown Road and dead ends. There's a subdivision that's going to be built in that area, and that was one of the main reasons why we fought to have that connection built in that area. And I know that there's been plans not to make the connection to 17, and we're not concerned about that. But we would like to see Johnny Brown Road, that piece that extended all the way to Billy Swills Boulevard when it's built, because that way, the people in Christ Church will be able to go south from there, the people in that subdivision that's going to be built there will be able to go south without getting on 17, and a lot of the people using this bank will be able to go south without getting onto 17. And that's mainly what I'm here to do, to try to get you to take that into consideration. And as you were speaking about traffic tonight, this would be a good way to alleviate traffic in this area. Thank you.
Tommy Baker.
Council, thank you for the opportunity. First off, we want to share with you that this was the first community bank in the state of South Carolina in the last 10 years, and one of the first, I think, it was eight done since 2008 in America. So we're very proud of that. When we said, where do we want our corporate headquarters, and I repeat, our corporate headquarters, we said, there's no other place other than Mount Pleasant. We found the right location, we, we love the location, but most importantly, we went to the community, and we said, it's only good if it's good for the community. And so we went to the leaders of the community, Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Freeman, and we asked what their needs were. Their statement to us was, we want this to be part of the community. And my first statement was, sir, it's a community bank, we're here to serve. And so we went from there and he started to tell me about the community. We're growing up over here in Mount Pleasant, I know about this community, and so pleased to tell you that everything that they asked for, we wanted as well. And we said, why not? Absolutely, why not? So what, what has happened is when we did the building, we asked for approval of the building, they said they liked the building. But importantly, we said, you know, we want more than just to build a building, we want to offer three-eighths of an acre to the community that will be used for their discretion, we haven't exactly decided what it will be, but it is designed for them. We also said, you know, we want you to have a place in the bank building, we want the community to be part of this. And lastly, we said, you know, on Sundays, we want you to be able to park in the parking lot there. And this is the beginning of the relationship. They want a community building, we understand that, we want to help with that. I don't know that we can build it, but I think we can stoke.
Don't worry about it, you're the applicant, don't, you're the applicant.
I thought it was my pacemaker outside. So, so, so we continued, and so getting, getting where we are today, the community, to me, it's about the community. I said, and Reverend Galant said the same, and that is, if this is not good for the community, we'll find another location. It's all about this community. And quite frankly, I fall in love with these folks, and they mean a lot to me, and I, assuming, presuming that we get this thing done, I look forward to being part of that community along with Beacon Community Bank. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. That's all we had to speak on that. So we have the motion to approve. We are in discussion. Is there any other discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve item A4, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 18092, an ordinance to zone OP Office Professional District an approximately 2.05 acre tract of land comprised of four parcels and described as follows. One, an approximately 0.47 acre tract of land located on Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140003, and depicted as lot 26 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Two, an approximately 0.59 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140004, and depicted as lot 25 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Three, an approximately 0.69 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140005, and depicted as lot 24 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. And four, an approximately 0.3 acre tract of land located on 2324 Old Georgetown Road, identified by TMS number 580140007, and depicted as lot 23 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book DE, page 389.
Thank you. This brings us to a related item, which is A5. I might save you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Was there anyone here to speak to this from the public? All right, I guess we're prepared to vote on the accompanying amendment. All in favor of the motion to approve item A5, the first reading of the ordinance to amend the comp plan for the item that we just voted on before, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 18093, an ordinance to amend the Town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan 2009 through 2019, future land use map pertaining to an approximately 2.05 acre tract of land comprised of four parcels and described as follows. One, an approximately 0.47 acre tract of land located on Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140003, and depicted as lot 26 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Two, an approximately 0.59 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140004, and depicted as lot 25 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. Three, an approximately 0.69 acre tract of land located at 2347 Highway 17 North, identified by TMS number 580140005, and depicted as lot 24 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book V, page 64. And four, an approximately 0.3 acre tract of land located on 2324 Old Georgetown Road, identified by TMS number 580140007, and depicted as lot 23 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book DE, page 389, by changing the land use recommendation from community conservation to commercial.
Very good, thank you. Item six, item A6.
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning request, to rezone from R1 Low Density Residential, about two acres of land to CC Community Conservation. So this is taking the intensity, the use, the zoning designation would be reduced in this case. And it'll sound familiar in a minute if you haven't taken a look at this one. The property is located here off Long Point Road and designated on our comprehensive plan as natural open space. However, this portion with the star on it shown in yellow or gold is actually zoned R1. And so the request is to change the zoning on that, and the similarity is that the applicant constructed originally a smaller dwelling unit in 2016, and now they're ready to build their main residence. However, our ordinance does not allow two separate dwellings on the same piece of property. And you have a final reading on a similar case later on your agenda. And so their request would be to change this to community conservation, which then can take advantage of our provisions in that district that allow you to have up to three or up to five separate dwellings on a single piece of property. Not their intent, their intent is main house, and this one they built first would then become accessory to that. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? And we have a second. Mr. Bustos was the second, and Mr. Bremer was to approve.
I would just like to highlight for council that we recognize, the planning committee recognized that this is the second case that has come before us where there's been this issue about putting a second dwelling or building, building a, a house, a primary house where there's a smaller house on there, and that there's basically an issue with the ordinance, and so we have tasked staff with fixing that, so that we won't have these issues come before us again.
Good.
She stole my note.
Okay. And, and I'd like to add too, for the record for this meeting, what Mr. Ulmer mentioned very capably, I believe it was in the last committee meeting, community conservation is not the same as rural conservation. Community is to, is to preserve some of our unique cultural communities, and this is an aspect of that, is having multiple generations of families live on one plot of land. And so this would, if I, this would meet that, this is not a real departure from that, this is actually fixing it to where it can be used as was intended. Is that correct?
Yes. And not intended to be a subdivision, if you will.
Got it. Mr. Connect.
Is this a multi-generational situation on this property that we're aware of, or is this somebody that's looking at the rules and trying to find a spot to fit a second house onto their property?
I think their original intent was to build the main house, but they started, like you might, building your first one, being able to live on the property in order to save up and be ready to build the main one.
I can appreciate that. The next question is, does it have, where does it fall with our comprehensive plan? Is this something that we want people to be building a second home on their property?
Yeah, I think under, you know, the ordinance and on a couple of acres of land, having an accessory dwelling unit to a main unit is pretty standard.
That's in, it's in the plan. Thank you.
The applicant may be here to speak.
Yes, we do have a speaker?
If necessary.
All right. Any, any questions of the applicant? Are we prepared to vote? All in favor of the motion to approve item A6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
First reading, ordinance number 18094, an ordinance to rezone from R1 Low Density Residential District to CC Community Conservation District, approximately 2.03 acre portion of a larger 12.23 acre tract of land located at 1227 Long Point Road, identified by TMS number 557000019, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book AH, page 150.
This brings us to item number seven, which is a first reading of an ordinance to rezone from community conservation to low-density residential. I must recuse myself from this, not because I have an interest in this or any other development, but I rent my office from the applicant, and that is a financial relationship, so I will turn over to the mayor pro tem to conduct this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have first reading, the ordinance to rezone from CC Community Conservation District to R1 Low Density Residential District, an approximately 6.97 acre tract of land located at Rifle Range Road.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, to save you some words, I'd like to make a motion to approve, and then also make some comments if I get a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Go ahead.
Just for council's knowledge, this was a project, this is a parcel, actually, that came in front of us multiple times, and council had several issues with previous plans, and the project never really got... And the project never really got to the point where it satisfied council in terms of trees and lot size and that sort of thing. And the applicant came to planning committee, and I thought did a very thorough job of sort of listing out the problems that the previous project had and what he is doing now to bring that project into more compliance with what council had asked for before. And I appreciate those efforts, so that's why I'm making the motion to approve. I think it's a good project, that it gets, addresses all the issues that we have previously explained and requested for this parcel.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Does anybody wants to speak on this?
Yes, sir. We have a speaker, David Rowland.
Mr. Rowland, could you give your name and address for the record, please, sir?
David Rowland, 1420 Page 3. The nine residents of the community are in support of this rezoning. And that being said, I'd like to also say that Mr. Polatka probably pronounced that, that's probably the, I haven't pronounced it right yet, so it's probably no different tonight, but he has been very forthcoming from the very start. He came over and spoke to us before he did anything. He knows our concerns about the road and the encroachment. And so, I know this is exactly the opposite of how we felt before, and we are very much in favor of the rezoning and what he's planning to do to the property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, David. Anybody else speak? Okay, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 18095, an ordinance to rezone from CC Community Conservation District to R1 Low Density Residential District in approximately 6.97 acre tract of land located at Rifle Range Road identified by TMS number 561000012 and known as Track B in the Myrtle Grove subdivision as depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in book DA, page 508.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate that. This brings us to section B, Old Business. Item number one, please.
This is final reading for an ordinance to amend the Pepper Tract Plan Development District, but you have a request to defer this until your next meeting in December.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion to defer, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to defer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The deferral is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve two, three, and four, and five, and six.
Two, three, four, five, and six?
See through six, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items B2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. These are final readings and things that have basically been unanimous all along.
They're all annexations as well.
Yep, and they're all annexations. So, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve items B2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Final reading, ordinance number 18070, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .98 acre tract of land located at 4325 Royal New Kent Court identified by TMS number 632000095 and is Lot 21 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EG, page 109 to 113. Final reading, ordinance number 18071, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .8 acre tract of land located at 1826 Omni Boulevard identified by TMS number 5610100018 and depicted as Lot 23 Block E on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book BP, page 163. Final reading, ordinance number 18072, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .68 acre tract of land located at 1334 Venning Road identified by TMS number 562140010 and depicted as Lot 12 on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book H, page 26. Final reading, ordinance number 18073, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .54 acre tract of land located at 3749 Station Point Court identified by TMS number 596080044 and depicted as Lot 42 Block A on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EA, page 86. Final reading, ordinance number 18074, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately 1.49 acre tract of land located at 1708 Omni Boulevard identified by TMS number 561010034 and depicted as Lot 17 Block E on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book BN, page 191.
Thank you very much. This brings us to item B7, which is final reading of Park and Recreational and Green Space Preservation and Protection Plans. Would you be turning it over to Ms. Cannon?
Ms. Cannon, yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm not going to go over too much, other than what's changed between first reading and second reading, and that was based on some concerns from Mr. Santos about the lack of allowable recreation areas. And so, Eddie and I worked with the Recreation Department to try to find out what the needs were with these, the fundamental eight-year-old soccer league where they would practice within their neighborhood and they wouldn't have to drive outside of their neighborhood. And so, they're called microfields, you're familiar with them, but we went through the, I think it ended up being 20 by 40 yards. But so, we came up with this extra provision where it allows for one recreational field per development no larger than 4,000 square feet to allow for active recreation and neighborhood sports. So, other than that, nothing else has changed with the new provisions to require 30% open space in addition to the 25-foot buffer along the streets, but I'm happy to go through it again if you'd like.
Approval?
Second.
Final approval as amended?
Yes, final approval as amended.
As amended.
We have a motion, and we have a second for final approval as amended. Any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank staff for implementing this recreation aspect of it very much. I think the parents of these youngsters that can actually get on the bike and ride up to the field and play rather than getting in their car and going halfway across town to be able to take their five to eight-year-olds to practice, we really appreciate it a lot. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Any others? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Final reading, ordinance number 18075, an ordinance to amend the Town of Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 Land Development Regulations by deleting Section 155.073 Park and Recreational Areas and adding a new Section 155.054 Green Space Preservation and Protection Plan to Establish Intent, Purpose, and Standards for New Residential Development.
Brings us to B8.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for final approval on behalf of all the trees and shrubs in Mount Pleasant, final approval of item number eight.
Second.
And hopefully, this will result in a greener Mount Pleasant.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a huge thank you to the planning staff. This has been over a year in the making, and we finally got to the finish line. So, thank you, council members, thank you, planning staff, and for all the folks who've joined in and gave us feedback on how to do this the right way.
I concur. Thank you.
I'd like to make, are you ready? I'd like to make a motion that we approve final reading for the annexations of nine, 10.
Wait, we got to vote first.
Oh.
We hadn't voted, it sounded like it. Was there anyone here to address this? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve item B8, final reading on the ordinance about vegetation and tree protection, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, is unanimous.
Final reading, ordinance number 18076, an ordinance to amend various sections of the vegetation requirements and tree protection divisions of Chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances.
Okay.
Mr. Bustos.
I'll make a motion for approval of the final readings of the annexations contained in nine, 10, and 11.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second on three annexations, items B9, 10, and 11. Is there any discussion or anyone here to address? All right, let's vote. All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Final reading, ordinance number 18078, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately 2.2 acre tract of land known as Lot 5 located at 1306 Old Rosebud Trail identified by TMS number 615000140 and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EH, page 978. Final reading, ordinance number 18079, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .62 acre tract of land located at 3721 Station Point Court identified by TMS number 596080037 and depicted as Lot 35 Block A on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EA, page 86. Final reading, ordinance number 18080, an ordinance providing for the annexation of approximately .63 acre tract of land located at 1009 Theodore Road identified by TMS number 614000301 and depicted as Lot G on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EC, page 71.
All right, this brings us to item B12.
Thought you said vitamin.
Like, yeah, really.
This is a rezoning request from R1 Low Density to Area-Wide Business, 1108 Graddock Road. Here's an aerial view of the property. This was annexed earlier in the year, and the request is to go to commercial.
Move to approve final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and just wanted to point out, this is in the area of the Walmart, right? This is.
Yes, Wando Crossing.
Wando Crossing Walmart, so this is not a, dare I say, controversial rezoning because the whole area is commercial. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. When you look at the red on the diagram right now, it's completely surrounded by commercial. So, in reading the minutes of last month, it does appear a little inconsistent because like two numbers from now, we're going to have a similar thing in reverse. This one is completely surrounded by commercial. It's across the street from a gas station. It's next to and across the street from the back of two large strip malls. There's really nothing else that can work here other than commercial, so it's a valid switch from residential to commercial.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Was anyone here to address?
No, sir.
All right, we're prepared to vote on the motion to approve item B12. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, unanimous.
Final reading, ordinance number 18081, an ordinance to rezone from R1 Low Density Residential District to AB Area-Wide Business District in approximately .53 acre tract of land located at 1108 Graddock Road identified by TMS number 559000176 and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book S08, page 101.
Mr. Olmeyer, item B13.
13 is an ordinance to add to the Pepper PD Conservation Design into the low-density, very low-density portion of this. This is the property that was just annexed. And you can see here that several of the lots within this large lot subdivision haven't been annexed yet. This is one that would be added and given that designation within the PD.
Move to approve final reading?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do you want to make a second on that?
Mr. Bustos. Anyone here to address this?
No, sir.
All right, we're prepared to vote. We have a motion to approve item B13. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Final reading, ordinance number 18082, an ordinance to zone PD/CD Plan Development Conservation Design District in approximately 2.2 acre tract of land known as Lot 5 located at 1306 Old Rosebud Trail identified by TMS number 615000140 and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book EH, page 978.
Mr. Olmeyer, item B14.
B14 is similar to the one that you saw off Long Point Road. This is final reading to go from R1 Low Density to our RC2 Rural Conservation on 10 acres at the end of Chandler Road. This is the one where there was the interest in utilizing an existing unit on the property while adding the new residential structure and then the, I believe it's a manufactured or mobile home that would be removed once the new structure is built.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to hog up all the time up here tonight, but we've seen this project a couple of times, and I'd just like to make a motion for final approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B14. Any discussion? Anyone here to address it?
Sir.
All in favor of the motion to approve item B14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Final reading, ordinance number 18083, an ordinance to rezone from R1 Low Density Residential District to RC2 Rural Conservation 2 District in approximately 10.2 acre tract of land located at 1450 Chandler Road identified by TMS number 615000089.
All right, item B15, please.
15 and 16 relate to the property on Nantahala Boulevard, about two-thirds of an acre of land, where the request is to change our comprehensive plan on item 16 from commercial to medium-density residential, and then the rezoning would go from existing Office Professional to Town Home or Townhouse District TH. If you recall, this property is located at, on Mathis Ferry Road where the road was realigned, so the commercial zoning existed or the office zoning existed at the time. This request would be to build townhomes on this particular property on the corner at the entrance to.
I'll make a motion to for final reading.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve final reading of, I believe on B15. Right? All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Kinnane.
Yeah, on 15 and 16, I'm going to continue to oppose this. Not that I have a problem with necessarily townhouses. What I kind of have an issue with is losing business property in town, even though it's an oddball lot and you might not really be able to do a lot with it from a business sense. It could provide an opportunity for a low-cost entrepreneurial piece of property to open a office. Maybe a young doctor that's renting wants to go buy something, maybe some kind of small service that would service the neighborhood that they could walk to. I just think it sets a bad trend to take away these small commercial opportunities because somebody could use them, and it's one less car driving over the bridge every morning if we can keep people here in town. So, I'll be opposing it.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion to approve item B15. All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Two?
Two notes. All right, so the motion passes 7-2.
Final reading, ordinance number 18084, an ordinance to rezone from OP Office Professional District to TH Townhouse District in approximately .67 acre tract of land located on Nantahala Boulevard identified by TMS number 5580100077 and depicted as Lot A2 Block G in Wando East Subdivision on a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book AQ, page 49.
All right, item B16 is related. Mr. Olmeyer.
Yes, sir. This is the comprehensive plan change that would take the designation from commercial to medium-density residential.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for final approval.
We have a motion for final approval on item B16. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Anyone here to address this? Or just answer a question?
Yeah.
Did you want to address this item?
Only if necessary. I'm hearing on behalf of Mr. Carr as the manager of the property. Don't have any questions.
Does anyone have any ques, yes.
I don't have a question about that. I just wanted to, for the sake of the fact that we've gone in the opposite direction on a few things, and generally speaking, we all feel and have said many times, we want to abide by the comprehensive plan. Of course, we do have the new one coming out very soon, so really, the one that we're talking about is kind of on the older side. But having said that, this is one where we did hear a fair amount of discussion, both from the owner of the land and who's proposing the townhomes, but also from the neighbors, I believe. We had several people. So, when you look at this property, I actually lean a little bit towards what Councilman Kinnane said, that it's nice to have places where you can have businesses, but it was already identified that this was a preferred use in that area. So, again, when you have the whole neighborhood saying this is what we'd prefer, I feel like we have to listen to that as well.
Thank you. I would add also that I think that made sense before they realigned the road, and when you look at it, I think it qualifies to be residential rather than commercial, and I agree with the neighbors. Are we prepared to vote? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve item B16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That one or two? Two notes. Okay, so the motion passes 7-2.
Final reading, ordinance number 18085, an ordinance to amend the Town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan 2009 through 2019. Future land use map pertaining to an approximately .67 acre tract of land located on Nantahala Future land use map pertaining to an approximately .67 acre tract of land located on Nantahala Boulevard, identified by TMS number 5580100077 and depicted as Lot A2 Block G in Wando East Subdivision, a plat recorded by the Charleston County ROD office in plat book AQ, page 49, by changing the land use recommendation from commercial to medium-density neighborhood.
Item B-17 has to do with principal use conditions involving pump stations, which brings to mind after this, we will take a brief break. So, because we've been at it for two hours. So, Mr. Ulmer, if you would lead us through this item?
Yes, sir. This is the request that we've been working with MPW staff on dealing with our current requirements for pump stations, locations, setbacks, buffers and those kinds of things. And at the last, at the last council meeting for first reading, Mr. Brimmer raised the question about the, if buffers were already greater than what we're putting in the ordinance at this point, would there be a way to add language? And we worked and we've done that. So what you have would be an amended version of first reading where item five was added in here that says if an existing pump station that's going to be improved, they would, if they have buffers already, then they would do, we would do everything we could to maintain those larger buffers if it was already there, taking into consideration the size, scale. And then six slid down. So you would need to vote on the amendment and then the full as amended ordinance provisions.
So number 17 is the, to amend. Right? Okay, do we have a motion?
Can, can I just make a motion to approve as amended?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve final reading as amended.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Anyone here to address this issue? No further discussion. We will vote. All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Final reading ordinance number 18086, an ordinance to amend the principal use conditions, division of chapter 156 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances, specifically pertaining to zoning code section 156.326(c)(3)F, which establishes conditions associated with pump stations. Proposes to amend the required buffers, setbacks and design approval.
Thank you very much. Let's take a five, 10-minute break and we will be right back. We are in recess.
Did you say five, 10-minute breaks?
Depends on how long the line is.
Yeah, what you need? This brings us to section nine, committee reports. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, there was no meeting. Bids and purchases committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The committee unanimously approved the following recommendations. Approval to contract with Cranston Engineering Group in the amount of $171,184 for the special area management plan for Shim Creek Study Area. Approval to contract with Hughes Motors in the amount of $370,387.34 to purchase two Mack dump trucks with snowplow and salt spreaders. The approval to contract with on-call contractor Southeast Pipe Survey in the amount of $874,572.17 to perform the pipe replacements in, in the Brickyard, Chelsea Park and North Point subdivisions. Approval to cha, approval for change order to STV Incorporated in the amount of $132,587.42 to provide design services for the Coman Boulevard, Patriots Point Road, McGrath Darby Boulevard intersection improvements. Approval to enter into negotiations and if successful, contract with Rosenblum Co. Architects to provide professional architectural services for the replacement and expansion of fire station number four. Committee received a quarterly local vendor report. The first quarter of fiscal year 2019, $646,900, I'm sorry, $890 or 29% of the town's expenditures was to the local town Mount Pleasant vendors. This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Lanning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Charleston County Economic Development Office presented a present, presented a program to us that they have had in place for quite a while called the Business Concierge Program. And in our committee meeting, we wanted to hear from them because they have developed this over a number of years. It works very well in helping to both maintain and keep a great relationship between approximately 200 companies in the Charleston County area. We would like to implement something similar here in Mount Pleasant that would actually take on more of a soup to nuts from the time a business wants to come into the town, all the way through the process of getting whatever approvals are needed from council so that we ease the path, make sure that communication is very, very open and collaborate, collaborative. We have a lot of collaboration from the neighborhood involved, the public, as well as the owner of the land and/or developer. And so it was great to hear from Jennifer Brown, who actually does the day-to-day operations of this program. And there are about 20 businesses already in Mount Pleasant that participate in this program. Again, I mentioned 200 in Charleston County. And it's a great way to also let them know, Charleston County Economic Development Office, that Mount Pleasant is very much open for business when it comes to bringing great jobs and great businesses and services to our folks. So that was the total of our meeting and concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Education Committee, Mrs. Whitley?
We had an update from the Executive Director of Charleston County Public Libraries, Mr. Nicole Davies, on the new Wando Mount Pleasant Library. It is going to be a 40,000 square foot facility with a 250-seat auditorium and is lots of different spaces for, for programs. And its intended opening is April 2019. We also received a presentation from Ms. Brenda Corley, who's the Principal of Oceanside Collegiate Academy, to share about what the school does, the curriculum and their successes and basically what they offer to as an alternative high school for students in Mount Pleasant. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. Finance Committee, Mr. O'Rourke?
You know, Mayor? Mayor, I'm proud to say that we had the best finance committee meeting ever held since I've been on council.
All right.
It's because I wasn't there.
Right.
But Mr. Santos did a wonderful job.
You're the fifth person I've heard say that.
That is so true. It was a great meeting. It was a long meeting. I appreciated reading the minutes, but there are two items that we have tonight for your approval. One is the approval of a 2019 general obligation bond ordinance. I believe Mr. Truce is, is in the audience if we have any questions. But it pretty much provides for the issuance and sale of 20-year 2019 general obligation bonds. The schedule for our approval is first reading today, December meeting, second reading. And we'll get our rating received by January and then we'll close February 5th. So I put that in the form of a motion for someone for approval of the general obligation bonds.
Was that under council new business?
Council new business.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We'll do that when we get there.
Told you I wasn't. It works better when I'm not here.
You should have left it to Gary.
Yeah. Okay, the other thing that, that will also be approved is the resolution to delegate settlement authority on certain legal cases. And that'll come up for approval later also. Thank you.
Great. Item F, Fire Committee, Mr. Brimmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. Fire Chief Mixon delivered a presentation on fire department resiliency, which outlined current structure of fire deployment models, mutual and auto aid requests, response levels associated with normal, modified and disaster operations and future plans to increase staffing at structured fires. We also had Amanda Knight, who was our emergency manager. She presented the new emergency operations plan and outlined, outlined the extensive process used to develop the plan. Ms. Knight also provided the after-action report on Hurricane Florence and reviewed the operational milestones in the ELC and in the field during that time. And then to wrap up, Chief Mixon also presented the 2019 and 2023 Fire Department Strategic Plan and provided a broad overview of the methods that were used by he and his leadership and the public to create the plan and the overarching themes of the document. And I will say that we just did an overview of those two documents during committee because they're very extensive. And I would ask the council to take some time with both of those plans between now and next month, especially the strategic plan, because that may have some significant budget implications for the coming year. And we want council to really understand what those requests may be and how they tie into the five-year plan. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Human Resources, there was no meeting. I'm assuming there's no report, nothing on that?
Correct.
Patriots Point Development Authority, that would be me. First, I want to, the meeting that was held in October was basically uneventful. Nothing, no, no news, nothing about the Medal of Honor. There is a meeting coming up on Friday at 9:30. I believe it's on the Yorktown, but don't hold me to that. I'll have to check my, my schedule. I will be there. And I'd wanted to point out just something that has to do with the gateway to Mount Pleasant. As you come in, the Yorktown has been totally repainted, in case you haven't seen the before and after. It's kind of subtle now when you drive over, but it used to be quite different. When you look at it now, it's really back to Battleship Gray, which is interesting. And on that note, we all received a report from Councilman O'Rourke and Councilman Lanning as we, or I had asked them at the last meeting to just gather basic information documents about the status of things over there as involved the Medal of Honor Museum. And I think you've all read that report. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. O'Rourke or Ms. Lanning?
Is that under new business as well? It's further down the agenda, I believe, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me make sure that is, yes. So that's the end of that report. Planning Committee?
Okay. Planning Committee did meet and we've already dealt with the building permit allocation system. And I want to thank everyone for their help and once again, planning staff for all the work they put into that. It was very complex and lengthy. By means of report, staff provided an update on the progress to prepare new regulations and asked for feedback on short-term rentals. This is another subject that we have been working on for quite a while and which staff is, is doing a good job. And they started with a map and statistics about the estimated number of rental units in town through the use of new software, which we'll be able to use to track these short-term rentals. These, the elements that were discussed were necessary changes to definitions, current business license and tax requirements, proposed, a proposed registration system to be able to manage the use of these properties. Staff presented other items for discussion and guidance, including the appropriate zoning districts for short-term rentals, treatment of this use in the old village, registration, whether whole-house rentals were appropriate and, and if property owners must live on the premises in order to have a short-term rental. Committee members debated the above along with various aspects like, such as a possible limit on the number of short-term rentals, sufficient fees to enable administration and enforcement, safety inspections, and where short-term rentals should be allowed. And the committee asked staff to return to the next me, to our next meeting with more information about the points, some comparisons with other communities, regulations and next iteration of the draft ordinance. This is another one that's going, that has been very lengthy and it has a lot of moving parts. And I would encourage anyone who has any ideas or concerns about that to contact me, send me an email and so that we can get that to, to the planning staff so they can incorporate that in the short-term rentals. And we're hoping to have that rolled out in one or two months.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Bustos, as you know, I've spoken on it a few times about kind of an area that we may not have a lot of expertise up here, but an area that I know about. We need to regulate these, if we're going to, if we're going to give a stamp of approval to these locations to become boarding houses, rooming houses, mini hotels, whatever you want to call them, we have to make sure it's safe or else we shouldn't be entering into this realm. And what makes them safe? Well, hotels have a very stringent fire safety code attached to them. And that's for good reason. It's because people have, there's been some real tragic hotel fires over the years. And you have things like the Americans with Disabilities Act. You have smoke detectors. You have possibly stuff that's remote from the street that the arriving fire units wouldn't even know was back there and might be occupied by people. You have people on vacation that might not be familiar with the location. So we may need exit signs. There's a number of things. And I think, I don't know if we do this parallel. We wait for it to come up and then kick it back to the fireside. Doesn't even have to go to the committee because the committees don't do this type of stuff. But the staff, the fire department, the fire marshals, they should be looking at this almost right away and figuring out what other municipalities are doing in this regard. So I don't know how, how you want to progress with that, but it needs to happen.
Actually, we did bring up safety and it was mentioned that planning was going to have to coordinate with, with the fire department because I, I think you were there and I said, I don't know if this is going to burden the fire department or not. But all of this is supposed to be self-sustaining.
Right, they should pay for the inspection.
Right, so, and that's going to be wickered into this as well, but I can see some money that will come from this and flow to the fire department because there are going to have to be inspections. And planning staff had said they were going to coordinate and start looking at, getting those questions answered.
Might go a step further with the police department. If we start to have these party houses and they need to have somebody monitoring it, some of that money can flow to the police department as well.
Yeah, I, I think all that's going to flow out of, over the next two months of, of question and answers.
And as, as the Chair of Fire, I'm happy to put that on our agenda next month to begin to look at those issues as well.
Staff has the expertise in that council.
Right, but we can direct staff to begin looking at that and reporting back to the committee on what they find and what some of the issues may be.
All right, thank you very much. Is that all for planning?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Police Judicial and Legal Committee, item number one. And we will be doing this under council new business. We have a recommendation to pass a resolution to affirm support of child luring or enticement amendments to the, to state legislators. We have a resolution here, I think, which you've all been given. We had a discussion of this, but the information, of course, was led by our police chief on what the current law is. He told us a little bit about two incidents involving this or, or alleged incidents, excuse me, in the town of Mount Pleasant, what the threshold was and how those were handled. And as I have said before, and I just want to say again on the record, none of this was to question our police. They handled everything perfectly and we're very proud of the way they have. What we were asking was what can be done from the law standpoint, the standpoint of the law, to give them all the tools they need to keep our town safe. And the conclusion of that was, was this resolution asking the General Assembly to pass HR 5006, which was co-authored by two of our Mount Pleasant representatives, Lee Hewitt and Nancy Mace. When we get to that, I guess the main thing that we would call your attention to, if you'll turn to Exhibit A, where it's got all of our signatures, what this law actually does. And it, it defines necessary terms. It creates the offense of luring a child into a conveyance, dwelling or a structure. And it provides penalties and defenses to prosecution. So that, that is the main, I guess you'd call increase that that bill would have. And so we would, from the committee, we have a recommendation that council pass that. We had a special meeting to interview municipal judge candidates and we will be discussing those when we go into executive session later. And we also looked at forms of legal representation compared to other peer cities. And we decided there's more information to be gathered on that. So there's no recommendation or action on that at this time. Public Services Committee, no meeting. Recreation Committee, Councilman Santos?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did have a meeting and we heard from various people, including the pickleball folks. And, and I do have an extensive report, but I'll submit it to the clerk to be included in the minutes.
Great, thank you. Transportation Committee, that would be me. We did meet. We spent a lot of time talking about Highway 41. We had Cal Oyer from the county come and tell us where things stand, where we expect things to go. One thing we did vote on was a, I guess, was it a resolution? I guess it was a resolution because we don't have authority over Highway 41. But that was to support expediting, getting four lanes built from the Joe Rouse Road intersection down to Highway 17 because it does not go through. intersection down to Highway 17 because it does not go through Phillips Community. The right-of-way is basically already purchased. And we just think that it could be getting part of the solution done while years go on for the rest. I would like to ask Mr. Brimmer if you have anything to add. We do have the stakeholders meeting tomorrow at 2:00 PM? 2:00 PM at, it's at the Mount Pleasant Waterworks Meeting Room. This is not our meeting. This is put on by the Highway 41 structure. We don't know the rhyme or reason for who is there, but I, my understanding is it is a public meeting and if anyone wants to go, they can attend. Mr. Brimmer?
In relation to the meeting, we are going to have more resident representation there as well from Park West. They have added a couple of seats for that stakeholder group. And I think the message from Traffic and Transportation Committee really was that, you know, we, we can't wait until the full project is ready to go. We've got to have a solution more quickly than that. And I understand now that county is really taking some steps to take that more seriously and perhaps look at options for us. I think we really have to turn some dirt here before 2022 or later. So I think that message was sent very loud and clearly. And I don't know if you were going to mention also, one of the other things that we voted on at that meeting was to have our attorneys and the county attorneys to have a discussion and see what the options are when the town has said that we don't prefer certain options and whether the county can proceed with those options or not. We just like some legal direction on that. And so by next month, I think we'll probably have some answers to that as well. But thank you for, for having Mr. Oyer there. I think it was very good for the community to know that we are following Highway 41 extremely closely and that the, this council does have the backs of all its residents to make sure that this is the best project possible.
What we're referring to is, I believe it's called local consent or municipal consent. Remember all those options they gave for, for the highway? And we unanimously voted down, I believe it was number seven, don't hold me to, I think it's number seven, that was going to put four or five lanes of traffic through Park West. And we just wanted to make sure, and we asked Mr. Oyer, that under state law, when we nix an option like that, since this is not technically our project, that they are bound by that vote. So Mr. Paglioni and those will be working on that and we appreciate it. So we hope to have a report on that at our next meeting. Yes, sir?
We also discussed two other options with regards to 41. Reverend staff, look at the Q lane on where Joe Rouse meets Bessemer, and also the extension, possibly a face-on road, and whether that would work to relieve traffic while we have five years of construction on 41.
Right. We got traffic management updates on Park West, on Boone Hall Event Management, and on Coleman Boulevard. And overall, our citizens and our staff saw a tremendous increase. And I want to thank our police for, from the, the weekend that things got tangled up after a four-car wreck and it never really recovered, to the, the next, I guess it was the next weekend, chief, very next weekend, had a wrecker there on station so they didn't have to wait for one. And, and I got lots of feedback from the public. I hope y'all did too, that things were much better at Boone Hall the next weekend. And I want to thank Boone Hall for working with us as well. I got phone calls from them and I know you did too. Did y'all have anything else to, to add on those? Okay. That'll conclude the Transportation Committee report. Waterworks Commission, again, I guess that's me, we had that great joint meeting. We need to follow up on that. And what we discussed was the, it's not a code, it's not a law. It is a, what, an operating agreement that sewer and water, especially wastewater, I guess, we should say, just wastewater, is not extended under complicated circumstances that are neither contiguous or within the comp plan or not within, not contiguous because they're not within the town of Mount Pleasant. It's a very complex arrangement. The process they follow for that is very complex. We had a long flow chart. And I got a thanks from their chairman thanking us and everybody on this panel for really making that a productive meeting. I want to thank everybody on his behalf for that. Did anybody have any questions or remarks on that? All right. We will conclude that. Water Supply Committee, there was no meeting. This brings us to Section 10 Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just announcing that the December 11th, 2018, next month's Town Council meeting will not be held in these chambers, but rather at the Park West Recreation Complex at 6:00 PM in the gymnasium. Also announcing to the public opportunities to serve, we have two vacancies on the Commercial Design Review Board, one for the Cultural Arts and Pride Committee, one for the, one on the Historical Commission, and two on the Old Village Historic District Commission. That's all, sir.
Well, thank you. This brings us to Section 11, Council Business, New Business. First is the one that Councilman O'Rourke was referring to, provide issuance, for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. Is someone going to take this and run with it or am I on my own?
I'm happy to, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. As provided for in our budget, approved by council, we talk of $35 million indebtedness through general obligation bonds for two projects, $30 million for the new Public Works Public Services Facility, and $5 million for the renovation reconstruction of Fire Station Four. This is the paperwork that allows for us to do that, and it's recommended to for approval.
Move for approval?
Second? We have a motion to approve and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Is anyone here to address this? All right, we're prepared to vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Item A1 under Council New Business signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimous.
First reading, ordinance number 18096, to provide for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of 2019 of the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, in the aggregate principal amount of $35 million, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Item A2 is to adopt a resolution to delegate settlement authority to the town administrator and/or a specified town employee who's...
I can, happy to do that quickly, sir. Right now, our procurement code has specific authorities where things can be approved. And our procurement code goes at various levels, from a department head to the CFO to the town administrator, and then over $100,000, it goes automatically to Town Council for approval. We're looking to match our settlement authority with our procurement code at the same levels. And it's in the form of resolution.
It's the form of a resolution. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second? We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, which is Item A2. Any discussion? Anyone here to address? Yes, sir.
Eric, Mr. DeMar, how would we be informed of these settlements, the council?
Well, right now, sir, we don't, we don't inform of, of, if we have a slip and fall, for example, at a recreation park, and our individuals trained in this matter tell us that this is usually between a certain amount, and we end up, in fact, settling it at a certain amount, we don't usually and don't intend, unless council wants it, don't think you would, want to know every settlement that the town participates in.
Just to know that it happened, we don't need to know the person's name or anything, but we're just, so council doesn't get informed except at the budget at the end of the year when we look at the totals. Because I see a lot of confusion about our legal budgets, that's why I bring it up. Because those are all wound into it at the end of the year. And if we don't know the, the extent of the litigation against the town, then how do we know if, you know, the, the wild claims about, you know, poor legal representation are valid or not?
Truly, sir, it's, you know, I, I see it more like any other expenditure approved in the budget, that it, unless you tell me otherwise, it doesn't seem to me you'd be interested in matters, day-to-day matters that, that amount to...
I mean, if you took about a $5,000 settlement, that's different than maybe a $99,000 settlement in my mind.
Well, then if that's how you feel, that's fine. I would recommend then you, we, we develop a new resolution and bring it back to you next month.
Depends on what the rest of the council thinks, but...
Right now, we just have a motion to approve in a second as, as it is presented.
Didn't you already say, excuse me?
Uh huh. Yes, Ms. Zaline.
Didn't we already say that this is being brought into line with other documents that we already have? So it's not like this is starting from scratch or anything. So it seems like we would want to keep things uniform.
Mr. Brimmer?
Yeah, my comments certainly do not reflect any concern regarding staff and their ability to settle claims. I just, I see legal claims as being different from procurement, and I think there's a transparency issue here. And $100,000 is a good bit of tax money, and I just think council needs to be involved at that level. I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with the $100,000 level. There may be a lower level that I'm comfortable with, but that seems high to me, especially if there's multiple claims. So I, I can't support this with that, with that amount on it.
May I ask, is, is there anyone else? Before I jump in? What, what would be the process for some type of legal? In other words, how, how do we know from a legal standpoint that, that a case like this is, is valid? So no one's tempted, you know, to, to run a racket, as it were, because things don't, don't come, come forward?
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. And, and one is from our standard insurance carrier, our town administrator mentioned a slip and fall. Sometimes when we have deductibles or there are minor things that historically, council has indicated, at least to us as staff, you know, what, why are you bringing this to us? For, for minors. So that's one element of it. And then I think there are direct actions where it is an actual liability issue for the town to consider. And again, in the past, council, for example, sometimes in condemnations, there have been for specific projects limited up to a certain amount. So it's not to burden, when you're acquiring 40 properties on a project, that can get burdensome. So that would be the reason. What I will also tell you is, is that when there are difficult issues or issues that, that warrant council's attention, this is not required. Town administrator with legal's recommendation or without will often bring these matters to Town Council. So it's not an all-or-nothing proposition. And I think, so there's some flexibility in that, and that'd be the, one of the reasons for doing it.
I, I favor the idea of having a risk manager and, you know, settling things as soon as possible, but there are strategic issues related to it, as us three guys know. Sometimes you settle something with the wrong opponent, and next thing you know, there's 12 cases, you know, that mirror that first one. So it's, there's a lot more to it than kind of most people probably know.
Do, yes, sir. Mr. O'Rourke?
A lot of times, we don't have control over what's settled and what isn't settled. Our carrier gets to make that decision based on what they feel like could be a maximum output of the money. I think that this ordinance is really about letting the smaller things be, be handled by staff and let the bigger things be handled by council. I don't think it's meant to, to leave us out of anything. If, if there is something, if we're going to draw a line, maybe we draw it in litigation, you know? I mean, if it, if there are actual court cases that we get some kind of information on it, but there are some really small things that come through here that just go to, toward claim, and it's just, it's handled. I don't think the intent in this, because it came into our committee, was to, to not inform council of anything. It's just to let the staff handle the small ones. But as I said, a lot of these things, once they go to our insurance carrier, they make the decision on what gets settled and what doesn't get settled. I don't know what I just said, but...
We've been, we, we missed that when you were at a committee. We haven't heard that in a while. No, but you took the question right out of my mouth, is how, how many of these settlements are our cash and how much of it is our carrier's?
Exactly. We're paying that premium anyway.
You know, I've been in government long enough too, that, and we have a former councilman here, county councilman, you know, there is an industry out there that operates on lawsuits. And when there are these kind of thresholds in place, it's amazing. I mean, I know the county used to have a $25,000 threshold, and you'd be amazed at the number of lawsuits that came in for 24,999. So I think it's, I'd like to have some sort of protection against that. I think $100,000 is, is a lot for us to kind of hand over to staff. And also, you know, I don't think staff necessarily wants all that responsibility either for that kind of money. So I, I just think it's a better way to, to write this in a way that provides transparency but also doesn't encourage lawsuits, which happens in government. I mean, that's, that's the reality, is you get a lot of these when, when the mechanism's in place.
Yeah, I see, that's right, there's an R there. Any, any others? Were you, yeah, okay, oh.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I thought you were asking for something. So we do have on Item A2 for settlement approval, we have a motion and a second to approve. So if that's all the discussion on this for the moment, we will go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the settlement approval provision as stated in Item A2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So two no, so it passes 7-2.
Resolution 18111.
I believe the next, nope. The next one is the one that we moved, so that has been done. So that moves us to Item 4. This is on an amended agenda, a resolution requesting the State General Assembly to pass HR 5006 that we were just talking about.
I made a motion.
What?
Move to approve.
Good. We have a motion to approve. This has been made public.
Okay, I made the motion at the same time as Jim.
I'll second it.
All right.
No, no, I was saying Jim jumped in the middle of it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there, is there any discussion? And, and before we vote, I guess, it's got a place for everybody to sign, so if this passes, we, we will later, or at some point, get everybody's signature before we send this. So all in favor of the motion to approve?
Comments?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, had made comments at the committee about this. You know, we could have done this the day after this thing happened. Instead, we went on a public relations campaign and a Twitter barrage and a Facebook rant saying that we want to do this. This should have been done the day after we had these incidents and our citizens were scared by this guy, even though this particular individual turned out to be not a threat. It's the, it's the perception of the child and the parent that we should be addressing, and we should have done this the day after it happened. And I'll be voting yes.
Did we have a meeting?
We've done things like this with no meeting before, and just asked people to come in and sign. So yes.
Well, I, I think, well, never mind, we won't debate it. Is there any other comment? All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous.
Resolution 18112.
Item number five, report from the Finance Chairman on the Medal of Honor Museum, Mr. O'Rourke.
Ms. Lanning, jump in if I omit anything, but we had extensive meetings with Patriots Point staff, legal counsel, finance people. And after hearing everything, it sounds like there are issues, but they're not our issues. This is between the Patriots Point Development Authority and the, and the Foundation Board that is, that has made the decision to look in other locations for the, for the, another site. So we sent the email to everyone and we concurd that there is no action to be taken by this body, and really nothing for us to do on this. Now, there may be in the future, but there isn't today. Kathy?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple of things. So first of all, we really appreciated Mac Burdette and his team, again, legal folks, financial people, et cetera, that met with us so that we could ask questions, listen a whole lot, and then ask some questions, and clear the air on a lot of things that the public is concerned about, that we are concerned about, certainly that members of this body are concerned about. And, and a couple of things on this. One is that the PPDA has been, this is a contract that's been in place for quite a while with three different bodies involved, none of which are the town of Mount Pleasant, PPDA, the Medal of Honor Foundation, and the Congressional Medal of Honor Society, the actual members who are recipients. And, and it had multiple deadlines associated with the process of, for instance, moving the road, et cetera, et cetera, all of which had fundraising deadlines. And PPDA was very generous to allow these deadlines that weren't met to be, what's the right word? It was a forbearance?
Forbearance.
Right, forbearance, so that they would have more time. And this was done multiple times over the years. So despite a lot of, I'm just going to say it, misinformation out in the public, when you really dig into what happened... you really dig into what happened here, there was a lot of misunderstanding, but a lot of generosity on the part of time that ended after six years with the foundation board deciding, gee, maybe we should just look somewhere else. And that was never even entertained until about two months ago, so, or maybe a month and a half ago. So it is interesting that so much time was given to meet deadlines that weren't met, and then, which again, have nothing to do with the town. But then the result was, okay, now we'll go look somewhere else. So November 30th is the next date on the contract, and nothing has to happen on that date, and the town of Mount Pleasant doesn't have any part in that, but the PPDA certainly has, as does the foundation board. So we'll just have to see what happens next. I just wanted to add to Mr. O'Rourke's points that this was way more complex than people realized, and once we dug into all that, it really was eye-opening.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
On this issue, I have a real problem with the way the propaganda has gone out about this, particularly from you, Mr. Mayor. We broke this clock out at the planning committee meeting for the first time when the Medal of Honor was being discussed. We're never really that tight on time, but on this issue, we had to be real strict. We had the CEO here, he was challenged from somebody up here, and he wasn't allowed to respeak to address when he was challenged. There was issues raised about the finances of the foundation, which he could probably clear up since he's in charge of the foundation. And since that time, we've seen two Sunday newspaper op-eds, and that's your right. We've had the local newspaper talking about a threat to cut her off from information, I guess.
No.
And then we self, and then there was a self-fulfilling prophecy when there was four people interviewed about the Medal of Honor Museum, and you and Mr. Bustos refused to answer the questions, according to the paper. And then, of course, we had the usual Twitter distractions after the last meeting, where I was attacked personally about a settled issue, because we didn't want any attention brought to the Medal of Honor Museum. I think for, as a council, and I ask the rest of my colleagues, we need to take control of the information flow here and make sure that the entire story gets out. Because there was two votes where our representative went to the Patriots' Point Development Authority and voted no. And then we get a message from, to the news media, the town never wavered in their support. That's right, the town never wavered. The mayor wavered by voting no twice. People need to know that. And that control of information is critical from this body, because we're supposed to operate as equal peers up here. And that's something we need to figure out and get our hands around on this issue and future issues. I'm concerned in the future, if somebody doesn't like a company that's looking to locate here and give us economic development, are we going to take a personal mission against them and allow that? I don't think we should. And I think the after-action on this requires full transparency of what really happened, and the public has not gotten that.
Mr. Bustos?
Where to begin? That's the biggest bunch of whooey I've ever heard in my life. That, you know, you don't, Mr. Conane, you're just attacking personally. You attacked me. You attacked the mayor. You know, if you have a beef, most people will say, may I speak to you in private? They don't sit in front of an audience like this and start all that. Now, I understand you were defending Mr. Daniels for whatever reason, but, you know, that's your business. And no one tried to restrict any flow of any information. The information about the Medal of Honor Museum was right out there. And, you know, it's been a longstanding policy that you don't debate with the public. You want to give Mr. Daniels time to come up and start a debate. We don't do that. He had his opportunity to stand up and say what he wanted to say. We do not debate. If we start debating with everyone in the public who comes up here, we're going to be here all night debating. Now, that's just not the way it's done. Now, you need to take your vast experience and sort through it and stop it. Thank you.
Since I was addressed personally, I will respond on two things. As the ex-officio member of the Patriots' Point Board by ordinance, my two no votes, the first one was in July on granting a forbearance on a lease to the Medal of Honor Museum Foundation, which is a South Carolina corporation. Articles of incorporation signed by two Mal Pleasant residents, General Livingston, who was here tonight, our Medal of Honor recipient, and Pat Waters, who's the grandson of General George Patton. It is a Mount Pleasant corporation. It has always been located here. It was founded here, and it has a contract until 2023 to only build a Medal of Honor museum in the town of Mount Pleasant at Patriots' Point. My first vote in July was not to grant a forbearance on the lease, which had already been extended a year, because all of the effort was put to get a building approved against the town of Mount Pleasant's code, zoning code, instead of raising money so that they could comply with the terms of the lease, which was to have the road moved. That was my first vote, because look where we are now. That forbearance expires on November 30th. It is headed for a default, and I wanted to spare this town what we were put through on this, including Councilman Conane, you talk about me doing propaganda. I didn't start a Facebook group called Low Country in Support of the Medal of Honor Museum. No, sir, I have the floor. You addressed me, now I'm addressing. If you want to talk about propaganda, I gave information, I gave reports, I gave a two or three-page report back to this council, which I will refer you to, which was my report of our last month's meeting. The other no vote that I made, and I was very clear about this, was that rather than signing the owner acknowledgement of a site plan, it was submitted to Patriots' Point, including building heights and things that asked for variances here in the town of Mount Pleasant. I voted no, because they were asked to not include building heights and those things for the landlord, being Patriots' Point Development Authority, to have to approve that, because just as you heard tonight, that was called a no vote against the museum. Had I voted on it there, it would have come to our planning commission as a yes vote from the mayor. And, you know, we saw in this case, a breach of protocol that we normally do not do in this town, is start championing causes before they go to our citizens who serve on the planning commission. And finally, about the Multry News, what I told the publisher, I have said yes to the publisher of the Multry News, for whom I wrote for six years, yes on sponsorships, yes on passes to get their personnel in here to report after storms, yes on everything that has ever been asked. And all I asked, Councilman Conane, was that they acknowledged that our resident recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor, who came here at our request to address this council, to give information, that they acknowledged in a report that they had a week to correct that he was here, and that he addressed it, and that he was a founder of that, and they refused to do that. Now, if you're okay with that, if you want to tell General Livingston that when he comes here at our request and gives information, which, looking over the minutes you all thanked him for, that he doesn't deserve to be mentioned in his hometown newspaper, but Mr. Daniels from New York or New Jersey is whatever you correct us on, then fine, I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, that's fine. You're not comfortable with anyone who wasn't born within.
I have never said that, Mr. Conane.
That's how you act.
I campaigned for you, and I endorsed you, and you're not from here.
You never endorsed me.
So you need to stop these, I did endorse you in the general election, which you did not win.
Mr. Mayor, I also.
Point of order. We're getting off topic. If we could, no, but point of order, we're off topic.
Mr. Conane, do you have another comment on the report from the finance chairman on the Medal of Honor Museum?
Yes, I believe that my point is a salient one, that the people need to understand the whole picture. They haven't gotten it. They've gotten one person of this nine-person council's opinion, and I would urge the rest of council to look at that as a usurpation of our ability to properly represent the people of Mount Pleasant. And we need to take that back and make sure that the entire story gets out to the public, because it's a matter of transparency. Now, as far as your allegation of me spreading propaganda on a Facebook group, that group was started by a veteran of the United States Air Force. Do you have a problem with people who serve their country, Mr. Mayor? Because it seems like you're very hostile to him.
Is it an open group or a closed group, Mr. Conane?
I'm not aware, because I don't.
It is a closed group. It is a closed group. You talk about transparency.
And how do you see it?
You're an administrator of a closed group.
Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Conane.
I was killed. And, and, Mr. Mayor.
I think we're off topic.
Point of order.
I was kicked out of the group. I was still speaking. You kicked us off Twitter when you tried to attack me and my family. You kicked us off Twitter, numerous people. Why? Because that was last month's distraction on social media.
Mr. Paglirini, point of order. I think we're off topic. I believe we should come back to the topic at hand.
The chair makes a ruling, and if council disagrees, there can be a motion, and the will of council will prevail.
I've asked Mr. Conane if he has a remark germane to the report of the finance chairman on the Medal of Honor Museum. If there is none, we will close discussion on this, and I thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Is there a reason to go into executive session to receive legal advice? I don't believe there was any forthcoming from the report. We'll move on to item seven, report from the finance chairman with regard to the Wando Shrimp Dock property. Mr. O'Rourke?
That, I have had the opportunity to meet with everyone involved. This is a contractual matter that I believe does have some, could have some legal ramifications, and I do think this should be discussed in executive session.
Item number eight says, possible executive session to receive legal advice regarding the Wando Shrimp Dock. Let me ask, Mr. Paglirini, does this meet the threshold of legal advice?
Yes, sir. You're requesting legal advice related to the matter. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
We have a motion to go into executive session to receive legal advice with regard to the Wando Shrimp Dock property. Yes, sir.
Before we vote on that, Mr. Thurmond has been waiting very patiently about the municipal judge. If we could move that up, and that will allow us to have as much as time as we need to talk about the Wando docks, so can we, would it be possible to amend the agenda? We may not be able. I'm just asking the question.
I think it's risky. I don't think so.
I think technically, but given circumstances, my recommendation is to not do that. I apologize to the gentleman, but.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion. We have not received a second yet to go into executive session to receive legal advice on the Wando Shrimp Dock. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
If we do that, then we return from that, then will that have then obviated item number seven, which is any sort of discussion regarding the Wando Shrimp Dock property? Because I believe there's like a policy related, discussion related to the Wando Shrimp Dock that maybe doesn't rise to the level of legal advice.
If there is any matter for open discussion, you should have it before we go into executive session. Yes, ma'am.
I think that one of the things that was raised by Mr. O'Rourke was the underpinning philosophy of whether or not the town should subsidize and continue to subsidize the shrimping industry in the town of Mount Pleasant. So I think that is something that's for open discussion rather than legal advice.
I agree.
I sort of agree. I certainly think we should discuss this in open session. It did come as the conclusion to all of the information that was given, but I do, I gave that as my opinion in that report. That may not be everybody's opinion here, so it probably is a good idea to discuss that. And if you'd like, I'll start with that.
Please do.
Having done the research on the Wando docks, what kept coming up was the fact that I thought this may not be a simple land purchase. It may be a decision of whether or not we want to subsidize, well, let me change that, continue to subsidize the fishing industry in the town of Mount Pleasant. We are already subsidizing in some ways, and I believe that if this community wants to preserve history, wants to preserve what we feel like is a historic part of our community, then I think that makes our decision a little bit easier on whether or not we secure this property or not. I will say this, if we do not secure this property, and that fishing house, I think that's actually what they call it, goes away, that fish house goes away, that could change the whole game on that creek. It really could. And we would, by taking that action, make the decision to probably not be protecting the fishing industry in the community. So I think that's the discussion we have to have before we have the details. If this body feels like we should not subsidize the fishing industry at all, you know, that's fine. Maybe we don't even need to discuss it. But I think that that's the underlying discussion in this whole premise.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Let me ask those who were around when the land across the creek was purchased and the dock was built there. I think the land was purchased for $6 million, $6 million?
Yes.
And then the docks were constructed. So is it an accurate statement to say that the town made the decision at that time, of course, there's a park, there's a boardwalk park and all that, but there must have been an active decision to provide dockage for shrimp boats? Is that correct?
The original thought was that we would purchase that land on the western side of Shem Creek, and then that shrimp boats, some number of shrimp boats would be able to dock there, and that the public would be able to walk down and look at an active, ongoing shrimping industry firsthand and closely. But then it was insurance that seemed to undo that effort, because the insurance that the town required of the shrimpers was more than they could pay. So that kind of ended that.
Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I think that's a good representation. I know we have some boats over there now paying. I think one of the big differences between that piece of property and the property across the creek that Councilman O'Rourke's talking about is we use TIF funds for that. It didn't come out of the general budget, or it didn't, you know, come exactly straight from the town's budget. We used TIF funds on that. So I think that was a little bit different than digging into our own budget to come up with the money. Like you said, the insurance was a big issue. We had to make sure that they had good insurance. You know, we have boats over there right now, so apparently they're paying the insurance, and apparently it's working for them. I went down there the other day, I saw a couple of them tied up alongside there. So we did offer it to them. I think the town did a good job trying to help the industry by doing that, but we had to make sure that they had insurance. I think the TIF funds was the big difference here, in my opinion, on what we're talking about now.
So if we purchased the land for $6 million, built the docks for, I don't know what, but it's not cheap, and we got shrimp boats docking there, but there's no processing, there's no shrimp house, there's nothing there, it seems to me that this is one of the things that connects the dots. So if you're asking me, do I think we should continue? I think we should, supporting the shrimping industry, the fishing industry in general. It seems like we've already laid that foundation, seems like the precedent is already set. Yes, sir.
And also, there's indirect things that we do to help the fishing industry. For example, the commitment we had to dredge, it wasn't for kayaks and stand-up paddleboards. It was for the people that actually make a living there. And I certainly would think that we would continue that if that ever became an issue in the future. So it's more than just what we see, it's a commitment to what's going on there.
Let me ask a question. Mr. Demora, when we had it dredged, when was the last time, about how much money, and what was the source of that funding?
We used tax increment financing money. It was $300,000, $400,000.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Willey?
I think that the shrimping industry is something that makes the town of Mount Pleasant unique. It is something that is part of our history, and I think that it's an important thing for us to support. But that's, the issue that I have, or that's something that I think we need to think about going forward, is that's not the only thing that's going to come up for us. We have many properties that come forth in the town that people want to preserve and have as green space, or as park space, or as something for the public enjoyment, or something for the shrimping industry. And I think that we need to put something into committee about, maybe something for the town to vote on, to have a fund, a yearly fee, and a fund that is, exists for the sole purpose of buying back land for the town to own and preserve for the enjoyment of the people of the town. So I think.
So I think that I'm in favor of moving forward with the Wando docks as the philosophy of preserving our shrimping industry, but I think that we need to come up with a way to fund not only this, but future projects.
Great. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I agree with that, but I want to say a couple of things first. We're under a little bit of a time constraint with this purchase for a couple of reasons. One, there are some grant deadlines if we in fact choose to pursue the grants. Catherine Mayne was here earlier and mentioned those grants that could equal up to two million dollars. And the, so I would love to have a discussion about how do we create a fund for future purchases of land in the future. I think that's important, and it's not just for these type of lands, it's for all lands. But I feel like the clock will expire on this property prior to us ever getting all the discussion done and the approval done of where that fund will generate revenue from, I think.
Right. And we don't have time on this one to.
Probably not on this one, probably.
Right. All right. We have a, yes, sir.
This is another one of those issues I mentioned last month. We need to think about the cost of not doing something here. You know, one of the things that Mr. O'Rourke sent out mentioned that the type of processing that goes on at this location for the shrimp boats is unique on most of the, on this whole region. You know, we let that go, the shrimp boats eventually are gone. I mean, the reality is, they may be gone at some point anyway, but this could create kind of a cradle of a museum location. You know, I hate the thought of it, but we have to be realistic about the demographics of the people that are shrimping. And, you know, I've had them mention, say things like, I don't know what happens in 20 years. You know, if we can preserve this location, we're doing our part to keep the fleet there, and it's very important to the town. It is a big town, but everyone in Mount Pleasant, we didn't move here for the two Walmarts. All the people coming here are coming here for Shem Creek.
All right. Anyone else? We have a motion, a second. We've had discussion on entering executive session to receive legal advice on the Wando Shrimp Dock property. Should this motion pass, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda, or discuss in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. All in favor of entering into executive session to receive this legal advice signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are in executive session.
I've actually been doing this job for about a year, but I didn't pretend. I used to help her out a lot with the minutes she was sitting with me. She did this for a while. Oh, yes. And then some. Is it here? It's up on the third floor. Oh, okay. Do they usually sit around where they have their council meetings? So it can be a fast request? Um, in the past, we've tried to do like one meeting. We used to go to Wando High School with December and have it out there. And then it just, everybody was not.
Let's talk about this morning, Marcus.
It's coming out there. It's a huge.
Yes. Wherever I show. They just have California.
Did you get the draw the crowd?
Um, we get having pretty busy side by side, but I think it was a small, because it was on the agenda. And it just, what I just got into.
Right, right.
What's that hell on you now for?
Well, I started, I came in first, and we did it for three weeks. And then I'm not coming back until, I come terribly, at least once a week. And like, we're doing our vacation, all five kids, myself, we're going to a, you know, five nights off. We're going, leaving Saturday and coming back once, and then I'll fly home on Thanksgiving Day. So, you know, I'm not working all the time, too, because they have people, they're not hiring anybody to, they have, like, people that do a couple of hours, you have a couple hours there. But, you know, how many times do I go away three weeks? It's just like, and I'm just, I'm going, I'm going to, so I did the whole different back. It's like, why every time, so it's funny. Have you ever been?
I've not.
I have to eat it, because they tell me, yeah, but not with the firecrackers. This is the first time, so the kids are three. Do you know?
I've met him once. Maybe I've shared with him, so, not really, but I think.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and so you know there's up to 13. I'm not up there, so we're kind of close.
Does it take up a lot of your time?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like whenever I'm home and I'm not doing anything.
It's like a little addiction.
It is. It's like, I'm trying to quit.
It's like a fire, and you're shooting stuff. Before I'm done, I'm like, hey, make sure, you know, we done this house. Make sure you put this stuff out. Make sure it's all buttoned up, or whatever. Two hours later, my wife's son is looking at me. There's a fire, like, oh, no, the fireman. So, no, look.
It's a good draw.
Yeah. Well, it's not.
I've got so much redwood to grab a hose. You know, I'm still leaning around, it's definitely. I talked to Katie and Molly. You know, don't get annoyed at me if I can't get it all, because I'm not, I don't have it in my air. Teenagers and college kids, you know, sometimes I'm upstairs. Right. And I'm not going to break my neck to come downstairs, or if I'm changing my uniform or something, I'm not going to, you know, phone my phone, because I'm so scared, so it is. I'll get back to you after. It was hard for me to get used to, because they always said, thank you, but it's always in there anyway.
I would rather try to check this, leave to be called, because that way, when I have something online, I can see whoever I need to, that's what people get it when it's coming in, and when I throw them something to help.
The only couple of years you've got to be careful, if you're dealing with something sensitive, because if you don't choose those words properly, then I've been in that pit at least twice. You can take it two different ways, or, you know, hopefully it's the way you meant this.
My sister's gotten mad at me a couple of times. She misinterpreted what I said. I gave you something with it. No, I just.
First thing you.
How long will they continue to live? I don't know. They could be absolutely.
I think.
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 I think.